And that person is you. That can be applied to any situation. Because truly, we must all be the best versions of ourselves. And we are here for a collective good. It is bigger than ourselves. And that is what the New Armenia is all about. Thank you for everything you've done and everything you will continue to do. And if I may, on behalf of the diaspora, say that we stand behind you and we will do our part to give back to our homeland. Thank you. Thank you for everyone who organized this amazing event. We have much more to celebrate. So I hope you can all join us outside where the Prime Minister will give his keynote speech. Thank you for having me.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you are landing is the ever iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm Pierra &amp; Luckler. The building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel reinforced concrete legs with stuckle. The building received cultural historic status from the city of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of instruction. It is also an example of mid-century modern Googie architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles and the futuristic design is intended to convey new prosperity and the embrace of technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles' strive to be the city of tomorrow. Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
So my name is Michelle and I started out initially as a walk-in tutor, then began teaching conversation class and current events class here at the Singleton Adult Literacy Center. I get so much out of volunteering here and I mean, the rewards are numerous. One is that I get to have regular interaction with the students and I learn a lot from them. So it's a really symbiotic relationship. So if somebody is considering becoming a volunteer and is maybe slightly intimidated, not sure if they're qualified, they are qualified. Any adult in the city who wants to become a library volunteer can. There's some training involved, there's a time commitment, there is a minimum commitment involved. I believe it's about six months. But if you have the desire, I encourage those potential volunteers to pursue it. It's so rewarding to be a volunteer and you don't need a special academic degree. You don't need to be an experienced teacher or have a credential. Any community member who wants to volunteer and you know, help with building literacy of our adults can do so. One of the benefits of my volunteering here is at the end of Wednesdays, and I teach on Wednesdays, when I come home, my husband comments about how happy I am. He said, "It's like a happy pill." And definitely volunteering puts me on a high. It's such a joyful experience. The students here truly are joy and you know, as much as I think I'm helping them, I think they help me.
Illegally parked cars? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
The two things I love the most, my family and my city are right here in LA. This is a city of shared convictions, a belief in a country where we all belong. I am so proud of this city and its people.
In LA this week.
Pershing Square's ice rink is open for the holiday season. I'm Gil Reyes with details next.
I'm Anna Marcos. Come to the LA Zoo Lights and see all the wild new animal light displays. That's coming up.
I'm Sayeda Pagan in Van Nuys where I'll show you how this school garden will help kids learn anything from science to math and even English. I'll have that story coming right up.
Hey everyone, I'm Yana Kay. Here's what's happening on LA this week. The first of three Bridge Homes in Council District 15 just opened. The goal is to get people who are experiencing homelessness off the streets and on the path of permanent housing. Anita Bennett has more. Over the next few weeks, about 100 homeless men and women in Watts will go from living on the streets to living in this bridge home.
I'm homeless, I live in a car and you know, and it's parked in front of my mom's house. I live there.
But Alfonso Avina won't be homeless much longer. He's scheduled to move into this bridge housing project on Imperial Highway.
Three, two, one.
City leaders, including Mayor Eric Garcetti and Councilman Joe Buscaino, who represents the area, attended the grand opening.
This is number nine of 26 shelters, bridge home projects, that will be done by next June 30th. Think about that, 2,000 beds, 26 projects.
And those projects are desperately needed. According to the latest homeless count, about 36,000 people are experiencing homelessness across the city. Among the contributing factors are high rents, joblessness, and substance abuse. This bridge home will help address some of those issues.
This is a temporary housing meant to get people off the streets, into the system, and help them with whatever services they need to get back on their feet. In fact, this is the only bridge home site that's gonna have a job placement center thanks to the housing authority.
Other services will be provided as well.
With Subway Charmy, we're playing the role of provider. And our role is to do case management services for each individual, to look at their specific needs, whether it might be mental health or adult or alcohol and drug rehabilitation needs.
While here, residents will have access to a pet area. There are laundry facilities and showers.
In here is the men's area. Each resident will have a place to keep their personal belongings. There's also a bed for everyone to sleep at night. And on the side of the bed, there's an area for them to charge their phones. It's warm in here and I'm told it will be secure because the LAPD will be providing security.
For Alfonso, this area will give him peace of mind.
Like inviting him my whole day, I feel like, I feel like God is just blessing me left and right.
The other two Bridge Homes coming to City 15 will be located in San Pedro and Wilmington. Transgender women living on the street now have a safe place to sleep as city officials opened the first ever bridge housing project specifically dedicated to the trans community.
Today, we say to our trans community as we have now for years, "We see you, you are us and part of this city, and we will bring you home."
Today is a momentous occasion for this great city of Los Angeles. We basically opened the first ever publicly funded enhanced bridge housing for transgender women, a very vulnerable population. Many of the shelters aren't always necessarily trans-friendly. Many of them get attacked, many of them are assaulted at these shelters. So a place like this would be more affirming and safe.
And we're just so grateful that we have a home now for our community. If they decide they want to find work or go back to school, this will allow and provide an opportunity for that to happen for them.
I'm so proud to be here with people that I care about and I respect.
I'm so happy for the 16 women who now have a home.
Kids are our future. That's why city officials are supporting a new citywide strategy to make sure young people are equipped with the necessary skills to succeed.
Are we ready to fight for more funding for our youth?
Today is a conversation with a coalition of youth activists and parents who want to make sure that the city is being responsive in providing significant opportunities for our youth but making meaningful investments that are going to assure their success. Right now, we have 26 different departments that have funding dedicated to youth programs and not a centralized department that manages to provide any oversight, evaluation, and to assure the efficacy of the investments that we are making in our youth.
It is absolutely necessary that youth have positive role models. In youth development programs, they can find their guidance they have been searching for. We are the future, so why not invest in a youth development department? Our age does not limit us and we are capable of creating that change.
It is our responsibility to pave the way for our youth and to give them the tools that they need to succeed. Muchisimas gracias.
If you're a small business owner, then you know how challenging it can be to expand and grow. But there's plenty of help out there to help you succeed. A recent small business gathering in Reseda helped owners connect and network with a variety of service providers.
Bloom Forum is a product of my community action team, which is a volunteer group of over 40 businesses that come together regularly and we figure out how we can take action to make a better business environment in the third district and throughout the city of Los Angeles.
We've invited small businesses from the West Valley to come here and to hear from presentations from organizations that nonprofits, for-profit, and businesses that provide consulting services for small businesses.
So glad to be here to let the community know, specifically entrepreneurs, business owners, and those that are thinking about starting a business, that they do have a resource that they can come to.
This event was really, really important to me because not only am I a business owner, but I'm a business advocate. And to see my fellow business owners grow and thrive right here in our West Valley community is a passion that's near and dear to my heart.
Our responsibility and part of our DNA with Clark Instruction to look for local and small businesses to help us as trade partners on our big projects. So we're here to spread the good word, learn more about the community and marketplace, and look to do business with local and small businesses.
It was one of my first events to go to and participate with for Clark, on behalf of Clark. And I was thrilled with the turnout. I was thrilled with the turnout, I was thrilled with the feedback and the interaction. I don't think it could have gone better.
How do you get more people to use public transportation? How do you fight climate change? How can you use technology to improve our quality of life? Well, these were the questions asked at a recent Global Street Summit as experts and city leaders gathered to share ideas and come up with solutions.
Thank you for joining us in our first Global Street Summit. Our new mission in Streets LA is enhancing the quality of life for all. It's not just about fixing streets and potholes and sidewalks. It's making people's lives better. We all share many of these same challenges in our communities, whether it's climate change or more severe weather, aging infrastructure, limited funding, bad air quality, more congestion. Metro is trying to double their transit users by 2040. We need to work together to figure out how we can provide shade, provide transit shelters. So it takes collaboration, it takes partnerships to move us forward.
My vision for LA and what I hope all of you have a vision for your respective cities is, you know, how do we make the city of the future? How do we make it serve our public better? In order to do that, we need to harness the technologies that are out there. We need to think innovatively and differently of how we can make these things happen. And we're trying to lead in LA.
Many people are hungry, crying, demanding for an alternative to being stuck in a single occupancy vehicle here in Los Angeles. And so as we are combating climate change and trying to come up with streets and public works program that is cleaner and greener and more sustainable, we're also trying to find a way to use our existing roads that are very limited real estate to come up with a transportation system that is more fair, that is more accessible, that is more safe, that is more efficient, and that is more equitable than the one we have had for a long time. Ah, but a man's reach should exceed his grasp. Or what's heaven for? Or what's a city for? Let's join hands today and let's work together to reach beyond our grasp to make our communities safe, our communities better.
Community leaders and activists came together to rally for the rights of all immigrants and commemorate how California overcame Proposition 187, a 1994 ballot initiative that would have prohibited immigrants who lacked proper immigration documentation from receiving state services.
I want everybody to take today as a reminder of what can happen if we don't use the power of our activism and our vote.
Today is the 25th anniversary of Prop 187. It's the day that God knows what had happened to the Latino population had it gone through. It awoke a sleeping giant. The Latino communities across the state of California woke up because we were not gonna just sit idly by and let 187 happen.
During the effort with Prop 187, we saw some of the most vicious anti-immigrant behavior our state has ever seen. And we find ourselves reliving history. So it's important for us to remember how we overcame.
Look, I don't think there's a threat that there could be another 187 in the future. I think we're living through one right now.
My son was a farm worker, my mother was a housekeeper.
I was born in Juarez, Mexico. I was deported at the age of five. I became a council member, now I'm a state senator. Get engaged, go register to vote. And more importantly, vote, no matter who you're voting for, you have to come out and vote.
So thank you, Pitt Wilson. Because of you, I am now the first deported senator in the state legislature's history.
There's always gonna be individuals trying to limit our mobility and restrict things from us. We have always defeated those efforts and we will continue to do so.
Muchas gracias, thank you so much, and let's keep fighting.
LA City Council approves to expand services for those living on Skid Row. Kids near Pan Pacific Park get a new playground to play in. And Central Avenue in Watts is getting a major facelift. All this in City Beat. The LA City Council has voted to spend $2.2 million in state funds to expand services for those experiencing homelessness in Skid Row. Authored by Councilmember Jose Huizar, the two approved motions will see the allocation of money to such services as rapid rehousing, expanded access to showers and restrooms, and other social services. The Department of Rec and Parks and Councilmember David Ruth celebrated the grand opening of a brand-new playground at Pan Pacific Park Recreation Center. The new playground is part of an ongoing upgrades and renovations project at the rec center. Recent upgrades include an updated baseball field and a new soccer field. A groundbreaking recently took place for the Central Avenue Streetscape Project. This facelift will include designing and installing of medians, curb extensions, and planting of trees in addition to repairs of curbs, sidewalks, and gutters. All this is taking place on Central Avenue from 97th Street to Imperial Avenue in Watts.
Regardless of where you live in the city, regardless of your economic status, everyone deserves equal, fair, and just resources. And this is what we're doing here today.
Students at one Van Nuys Elementary School are getting a unique opportunity to learn about math, science, and other subjects in a one-of-a-kind outdoor learning laboratory. It's called the Project Learning Garden. Sayeda Pagan was there as the garden was planted. Understanding how food grows, sustainability, and the value of teamwork, these are the lessons students at Sylvan Park Elementary School will be getting as part of Project Learning Garden. It was all made possible thanks to the Captain Planet Foundation, based on the animated series, along with community partners, Viara's supermarkets, and Dole Packaged Foods.
Is everybody excited about this?
The students got great hands-on experience building plant beds and learning how to prepare soil for planting lettuce, peppers, and other vegetables.
It's amazing garden and it's really great and I'm having fun with it.
Sylvan Park Elementary was one of only two Los Angeles schools to get this environmental education grant. This project is designed to teach kids more than just about agriculture. These students will be learning about math and science and even writing through the lens of gardening.
Measurement comes in also when we're talking about colors and shapes and history and just finding ways to integrate the garden into the instruction that they're already charged with teaching.
They need to learn the lessons of, you know, fruits and vegetables and the things that they consume on a daily basis just don't happen. It takes a lot of hard work, it takes perseverance, a lot of love.
Project Learning Garden also teaches children about good nutrition.
So this is gonna be so great when they do come up to pull them out and really make a salad and have them taste different vegetables. I think it's gonna be awesome.
A lot of kids are ready.
Yeah, because vegetables are good and they're also nice for you. They're healthy.
Over the next several years, this learning garden will be used by the school's nearly 1,000 students. The ultimate goal is to help them become part of the next generation of informed and empowered citizens who can better manage the earth's resources. The Captain Plant Foundation has served more than a million children through its programs. For more information, go to captainplanetfoundation.org. Folks came out to support our local firefighters and their families during a golf tournament. Proceeds benefit the LA City Fire Foundation, which helps support firefighter families in their time of need.
A lot of people reach out and they wanna know what they can do for firefighters or donate. And they do, and where does that money go? We don't really know. And now, we can make sure that that money goes to firefighters and the families that are in need. Proud to be here to support the firefighter foundation. Through the foundation, we can support their efforts to help their members, help their families, and reinvest in the community. So to be able to give back to a foundation that's gonna support their own is really, from our end, very easy to do because what they do is the hard part.
Lace up your skates for a night on the ice, or a day for that matter. As Gil Reyes reports, the Pershing Square Holiday Ice Rink has opened to kick off the holiday season.
Beneath blue skies and towering skyscrapers, LA City's largest outdoor ice rink returns, signaling the start of the holidays in downtown LA.
I love this, this is the best thing to hit Los Angeles.
We're the first kids on the ice. It's a really good opportunity, you can have fun with your friends.
And it's strange that it's in Los Angeles because it's, you know, it's sunny.
Bi-Holiday Ice Rink returns to downtown's Pershing Square for its 22nd season. Besides daily skating, get ready for DJ nights, festivals, and concerts to help fill you with cheer well past the new year.
I know people that have been coming here for years with their family and I don't know, there's something romantic about this ice rink because I know there's been over 100 proposals on this ice. Rumor has it, we're gonna do our first wedding this year.
Three, two, one.
But first, an icebreaker hosted by the LA Department of Rec and Parks, filled with all kinds of wintery wonder. This opening ceremony included Olympic figure skating champions. Wow, look at that. Also Snoopy strutting his stuff courtesy of Knott's Berry Farm. The cast of Disney's Frozen: The Broadway Musical also wowed the crowd gathered at Pershing Square, one of LA's oldest public parks.
At LA City Parks, we're so proud of these spaces and we want the public to come out and enjoy them because they are their parks. They're their backyards, they're gathering places, the places to come and relax.
Starting in February, Pershing Square will undergo a multi-year renovation to add new landscaping and a dog park. Construction means this will likely be the rink's final season for a while.
We're still going to have our wonderful summer concerts this summer because the first phase will not interfere with that. We're gonna try our best to keep some sort of programming going. But at this point, the ice rink for next year is probably off the table.
Enjoy it while you can.
At 7,200 square feet, it's the largest outdoor ice rink in the city of LA. More than 54,000 skaters visit every year. In its six years of existence, it's become a holiday tradition for many Angelenos. And this year, the LA Zoo Light Show at the LA Zoo has some wild and beastly new light exhibits you won't wanna miss. Anna Marcos takes us there.
Boy, are you in for a big surprise when you come to visit the LA Zoo Lights. Because this year, there are all kinds of brand-new animal light sculptures like you've never seen before. They are all over the zoo. And for the next seven weeks, you can be one of the quarter-million people that come in and take in the sights and the lights. The LA Zoo has turned on its yearly holiday lights with a bang. More than 500,000 LED lights to be exact. And there's reason for all the fanfare. For example, this new animal light show near the entrance.
The world's largest illuminated pop-up storybook. And we actually, we're going to register with the Guinness Book of World Records. They made it in Italy and they shipped it over in pieces, assembled it for us, and now it's ours.
And with all the glowing frogs, alligators, and other wild things, it's drawing a lot of oohs and ahs from the visitors.
Oh, you mean the animals that light up? Yeah, we saw the.
I like the tiger.
I like the tree, if there was a tree, I think there was because my dress is treated for it.
Oh, so it'll match your dress.
I really like flamingos, so I was looking at the flamingo cages and on the grass, it had like statues and skeletons of flamingos with lights around it. I like the tiger one because I kind of like tigers.
The gay man's choir of LA's a cappella group Aftershock helped celebrate the zoo's bigger, newer, and improved light show. Also on hand, American Idol finalist Kimberly Caldwell, LAFC soccer player Jordan Harvey, and Fox 11's Julie Chang. And guess who else will be hanging around the zoo all season? Santa. He's got his own Santa cabin for greeting kids both naughty and nice.
We have this beautiful outdoor environment that allows for this connection with your family and your friends while you are looking at these amazing light shows and being transformed.
You'll still find the big-time favorites like the Twinkle Tunnel. Only this year, it's gotten, well, twinklier.
Why I like the tunnel? Because there's a lot of lights and it's pretty. I like the one that's over there, that's a disco ball. That's over there when you're coming through that part.
The LA Zoo Lights will continue to glow, shine, and twinkle from now until January 5th.
It's Christmas in Los Angeles, you know, we don't get all the snow, so we get these lights.
To find out more, go to lazoolights.org. Underserved kids interested in a music career were treated to a free music industry career fair where they got to meet some industry heavyweights and learn what it takes to break in.
I can truly be myself with music. I can't wait to see what comes out of this.
I can't wait to see what comes out of this.
We are here at the Wiltern Theater for the All-Access Fest. This is Music Forwards Industry Career Fair, ensuring that all young people have access into the industry, spark discovery around jobs, and be able to start charting their own stories and pathways into the future.
It's good to have connections and know people, and they said there would be like job fairs, so I would be able to see colleges and opportunities.
Taking control of your lives, discovering things today, sparking things for yourselves, and starting to chart your own stories here in the music industry.
Grab the family and get ready for the next Siclavia, enjoy the magic and wonder of the L.A. Zoo Lights, and take in a family-friendly concert at Union Station. All this and things to do. The L.A. Zoo wants to get you and the family in the holiday spirit. Join other Angelinos as you walk through the entire zoo after sunset and take in the holiday decorations. There's food, drinks, and plenty of great photo opportunities. Bring the family and enjoy Zoo Lights. You'll also get to see the world's largest illuminated pop-up storybook. Zoo Lights runs nightly at the L.A. Zoo, now through January 5th. For more info, visit lazoo.org. Looking for a family-friendly concert? Well, look no further, because Union Station has the perfect concert for the whole family. Come and enjoy the Winter Wonderland theme with some Santa selfies, holiday-themed arts and crafts, and interactive games. The fun starts at 6:30 p.m. on Friday, December 6th. There will also be a musical guest and free cocoa. For more info, visit unionstationla.com. Councilmember Bob Blumenfield invites you to join him for Siclavia the Valley, a family-friendly event to open up Sherman Way from Canoga Park through Winnetka and into Reseda for a five-mile stretch of open streets. Bring your friends to bike, skateboard, run, or walk Sherman Way with Councilmember Blumenfield, taking place on December 8th from 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. To learn more, visit siclavia.org. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A.
Let's protect our wildlife together. Please, no smoking in Griffith Park.
Let's protect our wildlife together. Please, no smoking in Griffith Park. Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Kokorian moves. Ms. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Blumenfield moves, and Mr. Buscaino seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there are requests to continue items. Item 1 for 120 days to April 1st, 2020, item 2 to January 31, 2020, and item 39F to January 14th, 2020.
Okay, so ordered unless there's an objection. Please continue.
Items 1 and 2 are items noticed for public hearing, but both those items have been continued. That takes counsel to items 3 through 6, which are items for which public hearings have been held. For item 5, a Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee report has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, Mr. Rue.
If I could hold number 4?
Let's hold number 4. Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we hold item number 6 for purposes of an amendment, please.
Was that item 6?
6.
Okay, we'll do that. Let's, there should be a few. Let's vote on what's left. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President? The ordinances for items 3 and 5 will be held over unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Okay. I would anticipate we would, so we do, why don't we deal with that right now?
If we could reconsider item 3 and 5?
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now let's actually vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, would you move on, Madam Clerk?
Yes, for items 7 through 30, those are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Which items have, do you have cards on?
Yes, all items have cards.
So let's hold those items and then move on.
Items 31 through 38 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Thank you. I'm going to defer to Mr. Kokorian. Mr. Kokorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Items 31 through 38 are all settlements. They are routine, have been approved by the Budget and Finance Committee, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. All of those matters can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on those items. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
And, if I may, item 31, in the case entitled Antonette Sweet et al. versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $500,000 in settlement. For item 32, in the cases entitled Aliana Moss versus Lyft et al. and Scott Chappell versus Lyft Inc. et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $550,000 in settlement. For item 33, in the case entitled Stephanie Scott versus the County of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $2 million in settlement. For item 34, in the case entitled T-Mobile West LLC versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $250,000 in the form of a credit. For item 35, in the case entitled City of Los Angeles versus Reliance Business Corporation, there is a recommendation to expend up to $118,000 in settlement. For item 36, in the case entitled City of Los Angeles versus the Reliance Business Corporation, there is a recommendation to expend up to $105,000 in settlement. For item 37, in the case entitled Doris Holmes versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $125,000 in settlement. And finally, for item 38, in the case entitled Tessa Jackson Hinks versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $125,000 in settlement. And finally, for item 38, in the case entitled Tessa Jackson Hinks versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $950,000 in settlement.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before I call on the vote, I want to give this city attorney just a few moments to verify a couple of things. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. For item number 33, Stephanie Scott v. County of Los Angeles et al., the correct amount is $4 million.
Okay, so let us proceed with the vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you very much. Continue.
On the continuation agenda, items 39 and 40 are items noticed for public hearing.
You have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on both items.
Okay, let's hold them, and that brings us where?
Mr. President, that then takes counsel back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, can I get you to pinch-hit for me for a moment?
Good morning, good morning, good morning. I want to welcome each and every one of you to City Hall, to this Los Angeles City Council, which meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Again, today is Wednesday, December 4th. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call or roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscaino Sadio, Herastassen, Weezer, Coretz, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Krikorian moves. Ms. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bloomingfield moves, and Mr. Buscaino seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there are requests to continue items. Item 1 for 120 days to April 1st, 2020. Item 2 to January 31, 2020. And item 39F to January 14th, 2020.
Okay, so ordered unless there's an objection. Please continue.
Items 1 and 2 are items noticed for a public hearing, but both those items have been continued. That takes counsel to items 3 through 6, which are items for which public hearings have been held. For item 5, a Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee report has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, Mr. Rue?
If I could hold number 4?
Let's hold number 4. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we hold item number 6 for purposes of an amendment, please.
Was that item 6?
Six.
Okay, we'll do that. Let's, uh, there should be a few... Let's vote on what's left. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, the ordinances for items 3 and 5 will be held over unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
I would anticipate we would... So we do... Why don't we deal with that right now?
If we could reconsider item 3 and 5?
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now let's actually vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, would you move on, Madam Clerk?
Yes, for items 7 through 30, those are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Which items have... Do you have cards on?
Yes, all items have cards.
So let's hold those items and then move on.
Items 31 through 38 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Thank you. I'm going to defer to Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Items 31 through 38 are all settlements. They are routine, have been approved by the Budget and Finance Committee, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. All of those matters can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on those items. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
And if I may, item 31, in the case entitled Antoinette Sweet et al. versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $500,000 in settlement. For item 32, in the cases entitled Aliana Moss versus Lyft et al. and Scott Chappell versus Lyft Inc. et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $550,000 in settlement. For item 33, in the case entitled Stephanie Scott versus the County of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $2 million in settlement. For item 34, in the case entitled T-Mobile West LLC versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $250,000 in the form of a credit. For item 35, in the case entitled City of Los Angeles versus Reliance Business Corporation, there is a recommendation to expend up to $118,000 in settlement. For item 36, in the case entitled City of Los Angeles versus the Reliance Business Corporation, there is a recommendation to expend up to $105,000 in settlement. For item 37, in the case entitled Doris Holmes versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $125,000 in settlement. And finally, for item 38, in the case entitled Tessa Jackson Hinks versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $950,000 in settlement.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before I call on the vote, I want to give this city attorney just a few moments to verify a couple of things. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. For item number 33, Stephanie Scott v. County of Los Angeles et al., the correct amount is $4 million.
Okay, so let us proceed with the vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you very much. Continue?
On the continuation agenda, items 39 and 40 are items noticed for public hearing.
You have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on both items.
Okay, let's hold them. And that brings us where?
Mr. President, that then takes counsel back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment? Mr. President, whenever you're ready?
Yes, I am. I'd like to ask, Doctor... In fact, we may want to bring up a few more people. You know, um, thank you, Madam President and members. We should always remember just how blessed we are to live in this city of Los Angeles, you know, in this part of the country. One of the things that makes the country great, and Lord knows makes this city great, is our diversity. And one of the many things that we do and do well at this council is recognize the importance of having so many folk that come from all over. In fact, our city is like... We're like the mini world. So many times, each and every one of you, and myself included, we stand at this very podium here, and we present a different group, and we always say the second-largest population outside of that country lives in this city. And so it becomes kind of mundane and the normal, but that's what makes us so great, that we have the second-largest population of Sri Lankans in the city of Los Angeles. And for that reason, we're going to declare today Sri Lankan Day. Let's give a round of applause. To recognize a group of people that are very proud of the country from whence they came, a country which's flag displays a lion, individuals that refer to themselves as the Lion Nation, the lion. And basically, what that represents, it's courage, and it represents pride. So today, joining with the Sri Lankan Foundation, we hope to start a tradition in having a day that we declare on a yearly basis for the Sri Lankan people. And hopefully, next year, when we do it, we'll do it on a bright and sunny day with no rain. But this foundation was started back in 2003. And it wants to ensure that the people from the country remember what it's like, have pride, but also they're so proud to be part of this great nation, and they help make this nation great. But they celebrate the Sri Lankan Expo. They have the Sri Lankan Foundation Awards, their World Youth Conference. They have a big beauty pageant and fashion show. They also have a cultural concert, and they're proud to have a publication called the Sri Lankan Good News that kind of keeps the individuals in touch with what's going on in Sri Lanka. For those of you that are basketball fans, I want you to imagine what it would be like to come back to your office and see a message that I have arranged a meeting with you and Dr. J. I can't describe to you how excited I was to get that message, and I hustled to the restaurant where I had the opportunity to meet Dr. J. And even though Dr. J wasn't the Dr. J that we know of, the one that made it fashionable to dunk a basketball, trust me, my meeting with this Dr. J was not a disappointment. It was a very exciting time. I met a man that is a good friend, and I met a man who believes that success is a debt. And he has spent his life attempting to give back to others for his success. So it is with great honor that I declare with your support today Sri Lankan Day, and also a great honor that I present to you my dear friend, Dr. J. Please give Dr. J a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know Mr. President for over 25, 30 years almost now, and he's worked tirelessly for the city, and I know that for sure, and every one of you know that. And therefore, it's an honor that such a person give us this honor, because I have been here from 1962, working... I had my first certificate coming from Mayor Yotti, and that was when I was a student at UCLA doing social work. So here we go, and today I have the honor of receiving this honor from this council and from the President Herb, the man I knew for so many years. So here we are. Thank you very much. I have nothing more to say. Thank you.
Okay, so Dr. J, and what you guys ought to know is that he's a very successful doctor. Started one of the first 24-hour clinics where people could come in off the street. 24-hour clinics receive whatever it is that they needed. But I think the thing that makes him so special is that he does firmly believe that as he takes a step up the ladder of success, that he turns around and pulls somebody else up with him. So, Dr. J, on behalf of the entire City Council, we declare today Sri Lankan Day, and we thank you so much for starting the foundation, which is 15, I believe about 16 years old. Started it back in 2003. One more round of applause. Sri Lankan Day. Everybody, come on.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number 40. Okay, if I call your name, I can please ask you to please form a line behind the podium. Sergeants, can you please prepare the area so public speakers can come up? Nadia Abrica? Nadia, are you here? Come on up if I call your name. Liliana Huerta? Is Liliana Huerta here? Come on up. Laura Castillo? Laura, are you here? Laura is not here. Jesús Jiménez? Come on up. José de los Santos? Come on up. So we'll start with those four speakers. Nadia, you're first. Only the four speakers that I just called, please. Thank you. Good morning. You have one minute to speak on item number 40. Go ahead.
As Restorant Owner and President of SoCal Restaurant Association, we are against the mobile and regulated street restaurants operating under items camping in front of our business and the sidewalks. For more than one year, you have violated our rights as tax-paying citizens by ignoring the laws. Today, I wanted to ask you to please look at what you're doing. The moment that you allow these vendors to be in the streets, mobile restaurants appear, and now they're destroying our business. I am asking you to please do something about it. Today, I am here with my organization to remind you about that. If you vote for them to be allowed, you need to separate and regulate. Please do something about it. I am asking you, on behalf of everybody... I lost my father, the race me to, Ms. Nuri Martinez, and if he was here, he would be so sad to see that I'm losing my business.
Thank you very much, Nadia. The next speaker is Liliana Huerta, followed by Jesús Jiménez and José de los Santos. Good morning. Do you need a... Necesita traductor?
Sí.
Okay.
Mi abuelo fue bracero en este país.
My grandfather was a bracero in this country.
Y siempre me enseñó a ser honesta.
And he always taught me to be honest.
Y una de las cosas es que me dijo el día que emprendas un negocio, dedícate a él.
And one of the things that happened when he lost his business?
No. Que se dedica al negocio. Que me ayudó a dedicar al negocio.
I was going to dedicate myself to the business.
Ya, ser honesta.
To be honest.
A pagar lo que es de César a la César y lo que es de Dios a Dios.
And to give to Caesar what is Caesar's and to give to God what is God's.
Y yo estoy haciendo eso, y lamentablemente esta gente se está ahorrando todos los impuestos y mi negocio se está yendo para abajo.
And that is what I am doing. However, these people unfortunately are not paying taxes, and my business is going down.
El día que tengo buen... Ya, son los domingos cuando ellos... Los mobile restaurants no trabajan porque les fue muy bien durante la semana.
The only day that's good for me is on Sundays because the mobile restaurants are not working, and that's when I do better.
Y espero que ustedes hagan algo y implementen las leyes justas.
I hope that you all do something and implement what are fair laws.
Pagando todos los impuestos, aseguranzas, la liability, la workers' comp, y agua, luz, y todo lo que nosotros pagamos.
I hope the major people are paying their insurance, the bills, water bills, everything that we are already paying for. I hope that everyone else pays for it too.
Para que ustedes también tengan su paga.
And that way, you also receive what is your pay.
Así también nosotros pagamos a nuestros empleados.
And we can also pay our employees.
Y también pago contador.
And the accountants. Que gracias. Jesús Jiménez? Necesita tradutora? Sí?
Muy buenos días, señores concejales.
Very good morning, Mr. Councilmembers.
Estamos aquí el día de hoy, y hemos venido las reuniones pasadas para que se nos escuche y tomen conciencia.
We are here today, and we have been here at previous meetings, so that we can be taken into account and made into conscious.
De lo que nos está sucediendo con los vendedores de comida en la calle.
As to what is happening to the food vendors on the street.
Que nos están quitando el negocio, y estamos perdiendo muchísimo dinero.
We are having our businesses taken away, and we are losing a lot of money.
Queremos que tomen conciencia de cómo un negocio se funda con esfuerzos.
We want you to be aware of how a business comes together with so much effort.
Y que de la noche a la mañana, por una ley o algo similar, nos estamos yendo abajo.
And then from day to night, for a law, one of us, we can start going down.
Esto no es justo para nadie, ni para la salubridad de las personas, mucho menos para los dueños de negocio.
This is not fair to anyone, nor the health concerns, nor the owners of the businesses.
Muchas gracias, y espero que puedan tomar una buena decisión.
Thank you very much, and I hope you can make a good decision.
Gracias.
Thank you. Gracias. El siguiente persona es Jesús de los Santos?
José.
Oh, perdón, José, un momentito. Ah, las personas, se pueden sentar si no les he llamado, por favor. I need you to sit, take your seats if I have not called your name. Thank you. The next speaker after José is María Torres. Are you here? María Torres is not here. Jesse Vázquez? Jesse Vázquez? It's not here. Rafael Guerrero? Alicia Mendoza? Alicia Mendoza is not here. Marte Rigos? Marte Rigos is not here. Vivian? Hartman, you want to come on up? Okay, señor. Puede continuar.
Laura is already here, because you all already called her, and she wasn't here, but she's already here.
I... If she did not raise her hand, Vivian, if I called your name, please stand behind Vivian. José, go ahead. You have a one minute.
Okay, can you guys give me a favor? You know, nobody put attention on what we say, you know? Everybody was talking to each other, and nobody know what we say. So can you give me a favor and put attention?
He's asking for the council members to listen to him.
He has one minute to speak. He needs to continue to speak, sir. Your time is running out.
You know, we are here now because we don't want to... We want to overhear and see what you guys doing. You know, we are here because we have a really problem in the street, you know? And probably you guys doesn't know, and I know everybody can make a mistake, but it's the time to fix the mistake you guys doing. Because, you know, they confuse, you know, the vendors with the mobile restaurants in the street. And you know, what they do, they are...
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Your time is up. The next speaker? If I called your name, Vivian, are you next? Come on up. No, I'm sorry. Everybody gets one minute per item. Those are the rules. You have your one minute to speak, sir. Thank you very much. Vivian, can you please come on up?
Hello, everyone. My name is Vivian Hartman with SoCal Restaurant, and I would like your attention. In the city of Los Angeles, in the city of angels, I represent restaurants who are directly affected by the decriminalization of these street vendors. They are no longer vendors. In front of you, I have given you a package with a definition of what a vendor is according to the state of California and Los Angeles versus a restaurant that has service to others with seating provided, thus, in violation of the vendor law that you are going to vote on. I need your attention and assistance to help us. Another restaurant has gone. And for the people who have low immune systems, like my daughter, Sophia Hartman, who you have a resolution for bone marrow awareness, to understand that if somebody eats the tainted food, they may die, have a fever, go to the hospital, not know why they died, and you will be directly responsible because you failed to listen to the differences. The Vendor Act has to be amended.
Thank you, Vivian. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Laura Castillo? Come on up. I'm going to call a couple of more names before you begin to speak. José Trejo, are you here? José Trejo? Rafael Guerrero? Benjamin Castillo? Benjamin? Can you please step forward, please? Por favor, pásale, señor, para que usted siga. Okay, Laura, go ahead.
Estoy aquí porque hemos venido en varias ocasiones a decirles lo que ustedes aprobaron. Fueron pequeños camiones de comida, pero nosotros tenemos un problema bien grande.
Hi, good morning. We are here and have been here on many occasions because you want to inform me that what you approved, we're having large problems with that, because we approved vendors and we're having problems with restaurants.
Señor Price, usted autorizó esto, y nosotros tenemos este problema. Comida, restaurantes enteros de comida frente a nuestros negocios. Ellos tienen dinero para poner un restaurante.
Mr. Price, you approved this, yet this is what's going on. They have money to put up their own restaurants.
Dígame cómo vamos a resolver este problema. Necesitamos que ustedes pongan atención y separen lo que es un vendedor ambulante y lo que es un restaurante móvil en la calle. Necesitamos que ustedes pongan atención a separar un vendedor ambulante de un restaurante móvil.
We need you to pay attention and separate what is a vendor and then what is an actual mobile restaurant.
Nuestros negocios los estamos perdiendo. Yo dejé de pagar impuestos porque no tengo dinero para pagarlos. Yo dejé de pagar impuestos porque no tengo dinero para pagarlos.
We are losing our businesses. I have stopped paying taxes because I no longer have the money to pay for taxes.
Si pago mis impuestos, dejo de comer.
If I pay taxes, I can no longer eat.
Tengo tres hijos que mantener. Dígame cómo voy a resolver esta situación. Y me dirijo usted porque usted fue el que puso esto en la mesa.
I have three children to support and tell me how I'm going to be able to pay for them and have them eat. You're the one that resolved, that put the resolution forward.
Pido una solución, por favor.
Muchas gracias, señor. Ya se terminó el tiempo. Gracias. The next speaker is José Trejo.
Mi nombre es José Trejo.
¿Cómo se llama?
José Trejo.
Okay, José Trejo y Benjamín Castillo. Benjamín está aquí? No? O qué es... Señor Trejo. Sigue adelante.
Buenos días, los concejales, y a usted especialmente, nuestra nueva presidenta. La quiero felicitar por ese logro.
Muchas gracias.
Good morning, councilmembers, especially you, councilwomen. I want to congratulate you on this honor.
Y solamente quiero pedirles tres cosas, por favor. Primero, yo sé que los concejales están ocupados.
I want to ask for three things. First of all, I am aware that councilmembers are busy.
Pero que haga lo posible por mandar a alguien después de las cinco de la tarde a las calles para que vean el problema del que estamos solicitando solución.
But please do whatever is possible to send someone after five in the afternoon on the streets to see what we are asking for in terms of solution.
Para que pueda notar la diferencia de los vendedores ambulantes y los restaurantes móviles.
So that you can see the difference between a vendor, a food vendor, and then a mobile restaurant.
Y no permitan que estos restaurantes móviles se agarren de la ley que entró en vigor para los vendedores ambulantes de la cual ellos están aprovechando.
And do not allow these mobile restaurants to get a hold of the law, an interpreted law that is for food vendors.
Lo pido, por favor. Y gracias.
I ask you, please. Thank you.
Gracias. Benjamín Castillo.
Sí. Buenos días. Quiero donar mi minuto a Vivian Hartman.
No, eso no se puede hacer. Eso no se puede hacer. Si usted... Si usted se puso, se apuntó para hablar, usted tiene que hablar. Si no...
No, you can't do that. If he wants to...
Okay, he does not want to speak. He was... He wanted to give his one minute to a different speaker, and that is not allowed. So I'm going to go ahead and continue. Ask... If I call your name, please come on up. Mike Greenspan, are you here?
Separate, regulate.
Mike Greenspan.
Separate, regulate.
Excuse me. We've already heard you. You've already spoken for a minute. I need you to... Please respect the council chambers. Thank you. Mike Greenspan, if you please come up, you have a minute to speak on this item.
And Mr. Previn, would you please have a seat?
Which item are we talking about?
Hold on for just a second, Mike. Let me call a couple of more speakers. Followed by Armando Herman and Patricia McAllister. You are speaking on item number forty.
Okay. May I get my glasses, please? I just unpacked them from the rain, so bear with me.
Item number forty, Mike?
Yes. Excuse me, I don't have the... Okay. The vendor program. Yes, I see them in my neighborhood too. They set up, maybe not as extensively as these people have described, but I do want to say something, folks. You love your gross receipts tax. Well, let's drive those restaurants out of business, you dummycrats. Then you'll be able to collect it from the vendors, the illegal vendors. You guys are bright. Not really. You're fucking stupid. I just wanted to underline it for you.
Armando Herman.
So now the issue is whether or not you decide to help these people and their businesses and prevent the corruption in Los Angeles. Are you listening, goddammit? People are struggling to support their workers on the job. They need their jobs, they need their retirements, and you motherfuckers ignore them. It's time to take action and support the restaurant owners, protect their permits, protect their license, and let them provide jobs. Otherwise, you dumb nigger attorneys from the city of Los Angeles don't know shit. You don't know shit. Like Little Boozy said, fuck the DA, fuck the city attorney, and fuck this permit bullshit because you're not protecting restaurant owners, and you should listen to every constituent you fucking wet back.
Herman, you have your one minute of general public comment. You want to take it now? One minute of general public comment. Go ahead.
Now, my lovely chair, AKA Batman, wants to report on the record that your city attorney's office continues to violate my rights, my civil rights under the color of law, 242-25, when your fucking attorney puts a goddamn restraining order against me and demands that I stay ten yards away from those niggers in the East Hall Building. Quit your bullshit lies, motherfuckers. Deal with the man. Don't be pussies hiding behind the skirts of the American people. We are the American people. We are the face of this community. We are Angelenos. We are American citizens. And if you don't like it, blame it on the rain, motherfuckers. Blame it on the rain. For as long as I lived in this city, I will stop you from corruption, you motherfuckers.
Mr. Previn, you want to come on up?
Why do I have to follow him all the time? Okay. Here's the deal. Of the vendors. I write around and...
And general public comment. Go ahead.
I'm on number forty, ma'am.
I know you are.
I write around and I look at, and I walk around. These vendors, they don't have any licenses. I look on their carts. One right in front of the courthouse, all down Woolshire Avenue in Alvarado. They have no licenses. That means you're not enforcing. Now, let me explain to people what's going on. The illegal vendors, they're paying off. The councilmembers, I don't know, through the cops or whatever, they're paying cash money. That's what's going on. That's why they're not enforcing it. Now, they're illegal aliens, and some of the people who have businesses are illegal aliens. You're paying taxes and everything. So both of you are illegal aliens. That's why you're not getting any respect. And if you holler too loud, they're going to get you deported, okay? Just tell me what's going on. That's why they're allowing these illegal aliens on the street to do anything they want to do. Parking... I've had a lady, she's got a medical business. She said her clients won't even come because of those nasty vendors all in front. And she asked me to speak for her. I said, "I'm not going to do that. Speak for yourself." But I know what's going on out there. They're being paid off. So if you... If you, people with the businesses, if you want to do that, pay them off too, okay?
Ms. McAllister, you also filled out cards for items fifteen, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-nine, and forty. Do you want to speak on those items now?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Give her one minute, and then she's going to have her extra general public comment.
Okay. So I want to talk about the fact that Ms. Martinez, that you did sponsor this motion that there's $3 million. It's coming out of the Emergency Renters Relief Program. $3 million for people who had that sixty-day no default eviction notice, and their rent was increased. Go to your family source centers and find out if you can get some money. You can get money from... You can... Let's see. People qualify if their rent was increased eight percent since March fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and you have income at or below eighty percent. Now, this is coming out of Hackla, okay? So this is a city thing here. Now, what I want you guys to do, when you do something like this, those people don't know anything about that $3 million. They don't know they can go there and get four or five months' rent to help them out, to help with those rent increases. When you do something like this, I want the president of this body to stand up in this room and publicly tell the people that there's $3 million out there so that you can get some money to pay your rent so you won't be on the street homeless. Now, let me tell you what else is going to happen. If you don't get that $3 million, who's going to get it? They will. It goes in their pockets. That's why they don't tell you, they don't publicize it. I read. I read it in a newspaper that you got it, okay? So that's what I do. I do research. I want people to know because they're asking me all the time, "Where have I been?" I'm out there researching. If you don't see me, and I'm coming in here with some real information when I get here, that's what I'm doing. I'm researching for you. So I am working for you when I'm not here. Believe me, I am. One other thing. We got this guy running for office. Please do not vote for him. De Leon. He's another illegal alien. He boasts about having an illegal alien relative, not which ICE would find them.
Should we go to your generalist?
Excuse me? I'm not in my general comment yet. No, I'm not.
Yeah, but you seem to be off topic, Ms. McAllister.
Now, remember, I want you to know that this city has been taken over by illegal aliens. Of the six hundred thousand students we have in LAUSD...
Okay, Ms... Let's send Ms. McAllister. No, Ms. McAllister, you're not on any of the topics.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. You have your one minute of general public comment. Go ahead.
Now, like I said, the students, out of six hundred thousand students, five hundred thousand are illegal alien Hispanics, Latinos, and Filipinos. I want you to know what's going on in this city, okay? And then they're fighting to bring more illegal aliens in here. Now, also, everybody be careful. They're kidnapping our children for sex trade. Older women they're kidnapping, and men, okay? Do not park your car next to these vans or RVs because they're sweeping people out of their cars into those. And they're not telling you that's in fake news. You got to get your news on the internet, okay? Stop listening to this fake news CNN and all of that in these newspapers. Like I said, De Leon, do not vote for him. He wants to be a council member. He's just as crooked as the ones we see sitting here. And I'm just reading... I represent African Americans. I know these three negroes on the council. They never say African Americans. All of you are descendants of slaves, just like I am. I represent my people, not people of color. Black African Americans.
Thank you, Patricia. Mr. Previn, come on up. You're going to speak on items four, nine, thirteen, fourteen through twenty, fourteen through twenty. Excuse me, I'm going to give you time to speak on all your items, including item number forty, and your general public comment. Go ahead.
No, I'm on item forty. Thank you. So this is the vendedor item, which is an ordinance that took you a very long time to get ready, and there's a terrible, terrible problem, which is that restaurants who are setting up under tents, that are not little cart pushers, but are actual restaurants on the street, are using the ordinance without any accountability to provide restaurant service right near existing restaurants. So this is heartbreaking for the restaurateurs who have come down here. They came down yesterday, and because you were busy lathering yourself up, you continued the item, even though they closed their stores for half the day. And today, it's important that you put a pin in this, not punish the vendedores, who have a right to push a cart, but to set up a restaurant. And if you haven't seen the images, because you're busy talking to one another, to Andrew Westall over there and Herb Wesson, it's... You know what it is. It's on Laurel Canyon, sir, near Johns. It's on Van Nuys. These are little tent cities that have, not homeless people, people serving food. It's quite pleasant, but if they're not being held to the same standard, isn't it just like the taxis and Uber? Are we trying to push restaurateurs out of business? I ask you to take this seriously. They're very organized. They've talked to the governor. They're trying to get some relief because it's hurting their business. So I don't know... Now, why are you going into my time? Now you're going to make me talk on the rest of the items? That's a violation. That's a violation. But I have no choice because otherwise I'll lose my time. So let me just simply say, Mr. Corcoran, thank you for retroactively approving World's AIDS Day. I think it's a nice thing to do, but why is it retroactive? And why are all these street banners being rolled out during... By incumbents during a period of time when there's an election? I mean, we've been out on the streets gathering signatures from people in our district. It is very disconcerting. And by the way, no response, sir, about the very strange uprooting of all of our greenery along, basically Ventura Boulevard in Lancashire, near our Metro Redline Station, where, sir, we are waiting for a mobile pit stop. That's why so many people signed, because they want a place to go to the bathroom in our metro area. Because it makes no sense. What is the expectation, Mr. Bonin? Are they supposed to just...
Mr. Previn, you can go to your general public comment.
That's totally inappropriate. You guys need to get it together. And Madam President, welcome to your new role. You need to get it together. This whole string things along for eight years and then botch them completely has not worked well for the people of Los Angeles. In addition to that, you've got eleven final trap max on here, which I find astonishing. And you've got the ethics folks are down here today to talk about the behested payments and the non-individual contribution, basically a ban on developers, but it's way too weak. It's worse than what we have now. So you need to put a pin in that as well. And I don't know what to tell you. It's not going great. They gave you the mantle, but you've got to deal with the reality, and the reality is not good. Now, I don't even know what's going on here. Am I in general public comment or no? No, go ahead. What? On my items. Okay, I'll start my general public comment.
You have your one minute.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to just illuminate another aspect of Mr. Rue's effort to block what is a big scourge on our society, developers influencing politicians. But the best way to do it, and I've said it before, is for the horseshoe, there goes corrects, to all hold hands and say, "We're not going to take developer contributions. We're just not going to do it." But to do what you're doing now is a combination of a violation of the rights of individuals who do, I hate to say, big developments. I'm not for those folks. I wouldn't take a contribution from, like Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson did in Weezer, until they returned the one to Rochelle, which was Mr. Jeffrey Goldberg from Atlas Capital. I wouldn't do that, but he did, just in that little window in the FBI was just finishing up with you, Councilmember Martinez, and having a glance at Mr. Weezer, who's a good man. Nothing personal, sir. You know, the filing gets a little miss raising money for the school. What can I tell you? This is an outrage. And I'll tell you another thing, that what we're going to do with this ordinance is push developers into the independent expenditure pile. Bad news.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Next speaker is Lynn Moses. Are you here, sir? Lynn Moses, you want to come on up?
Am I starting on item forty now? Yeah, this...
Sure. Hold on for just a second. I'm pulling up the items you signed up for. Okay, Mr. Moses, you're speaking on items number four, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven through fourteen, and number forty, and your general public comment. Go ahead.
Regarding... Does that include item forty?
Yes, it does, sir.
Okay. Uh, the restaurant vendors and the restaurants, uh, they're asking you to do the same thing you should do with everybody, is be fair. Um, the city of Los Angeles is, the people of the city of Los Angeles are not being treated fairly in general. Nice presentation, Mr. Wesson, but you are an existential threat to sheltered humanity. Now, you wanna, uh, export your homeless generation skills to the county board? That's great. Be fair to these restaurant owners. They deserve to be able to work their businesses out. The street vendors, they need space also, so it would be really nice if, for once, you got it straight. Mr. Price, there might as well be a rock sitting in your seat. Uh, Mr. Wesson, Dawson, these people do not represent the black community.
Amen!
They represent big developers.
Your hair.
Stealing, unethical stealing, constantly. Mr. Dawson wants to take the EDD office for himself instead of having unemployment services for the area. Uh, forty-two seventy-four South Dalton is, uh, is item number eight, um, fourteen, is an aberration. It represents one of the failed attempts of, uh, Marqueesi Dawson to evict another resident from their property. Marqueesi, did I get that straight? You are corrupt. King of evictions, king of black eviction. George Bush smiled a month after the Iraq War. Twenty years later, we're still in it. You better pray you lose in court. This is our new home. I know. I'll go to my general public comment.
Go ahead, sir, you have your one minute.
Thank you. Marquise Dawson, king of black evictions. He evicted the EDD office while they're in litigation and tries to get the office for himself. Here's the paperwork right here, where he went to the city and admits in these papers that it's in litigation. What area needs the EDD unemployment office more? He doesn't give a damn! You're corrupt, immoral, unethical, bootlicking, bent-over puppet Uncle Tom Sambo. So, we get evicted. Evict the EFEVA Center. Evict Dorset Village, two-hundred-and-six residences, so you can kiss the butt of big developers, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two units.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. I'm calling up two more speakers on this item. Jose Camilla? Mr. Moses, just give the, go ahead and hand the information to the sergeant. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moses. Uh, next speaker, next speaker is Jose Camilla. Okay, thank you. What about Marcos? Marco Jimenez? Juarez, I'm sorry, Marco Juarez? Mr. Juarez, you're speaking on item number forty and your general public comment.
Yes. Uh, good morning. My name is Marco Juarez, and I'm here to support, uh, restaurant owners, um, to be fair with them. Not much to say about it, I don't know the rest of the situation, can I go into my public comment? Uh, Mr. Attorney of Fable Street, you're not complying to the state law to protect me as a disabled individual from harassment, intimidation, retaliation, under the color of the law, eighteen U.S.C. Section two-four-five and American Disability Act, under the housing discrimination by Los Angeles Housing Community Investment Department and public servants refusing to do their job. And that's enough is enough for these public servants doing all the harassment, helping to steal money from low-income families, disabled Hispanic tenants, under Social Security. That's a federal crime they're committing, they know about it, and they already told me. You better keep quiet, or something is gonna happen to myself. And those public servants making threats to low-income families, disabled Hispanic tenants, that's shameful. Thank you.
Uh, sir? Sir, you have your general public comment. Do you wanna speak to that? Mr. Juarez?
Yeah, that's, uh, still the same, the same problems about the, the, the Los Angeles Housing Community Investment Department, still. When all of you guys gonna do something? I have a, a comment on Mr. Rue, uh, Facebook, for this guy, the making threats, and saying, "I don't have the same rights as a, as an owner," right? I don't, I'm not an owner, I'm a disabled Hispanic tenant. I'm facing probably next year another big, another increase in rent, so I'm not gonna be able to afford it. Social Security don't give you four percent, they give you only one percent for next year, and that's shameful. You guys don't do anything to help us to stop all the harassment, intimidation, retaliation, criminal threats by public servants. That's very shameful. Mr. Attorney, when someone's gonna do something to stop all this criminal activity by Los Angeles Housing Community Investment Department? That's shameful, guys. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the last speaker on item number four. I'm sorry, Mr., item number forty. Mr. Lee, you're, you're on the queue to speak on this item, followed by Mr. Kerkorian and Mr. Keretz.
Colleagues, this is unfortunately just another example of how, uh, the state passes broad guidelines without, um, considering how local jurisdictions and giving them the ability to address local concerns. Uh, this has become an issue throughout my district, and I can imagine throughout many of your districts, where we are unable to enforce situations where these vendors set up in front of restaurants, serving the same type of food, blocking sidewalks, blocking entrances, um, not being held up to the same health standards as brick-and-mortar restaurants. And so, today, I entered a resolution, uh, asking the state to allow us the ability to have more flexibility on how we can enforce, uh, laws. And I hope when that comes around, that you will, um, understand the situations, understand that the testimony that you heard, and, and support this legislation, because it's something that our hands are tied now, and we need some ability to actually do something to be able to help not only the restaurants, but to help our communities, and just basic, you know, abilities to walk, uh, along, along your sidewalks. We have open fires that are, you know, now on our sidewalks, and yet, I've had two different task forces go out and have made little to no progress at removing some of the illegal vending. So, I understand the frustration of, of the restaurant owners, and I hope that when this resolution comes around, you will support it.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. The next speaker is Mr. Kerkorian, followed by Mr. Keretz.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Um, first, I, I wanna, um, just attach myself to Mr. Lee's comments and stand in support of his, uh, recommendation, as well as, uh, the motion forty A that Mr. Keretz is, is introducing, uh, that's being circulated. Um, but I just wanna make sure, first of all, that everybody understands here today what we're voting on is only the fee. We are not voting on changing the underlying program of... Don't interrupt me, and let me finish. Um, we're, we're only voting on the fee. Now, I don't want that fact to minimize in any way the urgency with which we should be acting to fix the defects in the underlying policy. And members, I, what happens often in City Hall and in our state Capitol is a business activity that was previously illegal by everyone's understanding is legalized. And it's legalized out of a sense of compassion, or because, um, a disruptive technology has come out of Silicon Valley, and so what's always been regulated and known to be illegal for years and years is all of a sudden legal. And unfortunately, the, the, once that door is open, bad actors rush into the breach and create all sorts of havoc in what had previously been a regulated environment. And we're having that in so, we're, we have that with our TNCs, we have that with our scooters, we have that with, you know, trying to prevent the adverse impacts of homelessness on our streets, we have that when it comes with, you know, in many respects with legalized marijuana, we have that in so many areas where what was previously illegal is now illegal, and we don't do an effective job of regulating that newly legal, previously illegal activity. And this is an exact example of that. So, I think it's imperative that we drill down, and Mr. Keretz's motion is a step, uh, towards that, I think, towards beginning that discussion. But we drill down in addressing these bad actors who are trying to take advantage of what we did in, in an abundance of, uh, compassion, and also to try to help the folks who were pushing carts down a sidewalk, we're trying to help them, and then these people come in and basically set up illegal businesses under the guise of being street vendors, when they're not, when they're just scofflaws who are trying to prevent obeying the law, like every one of these entrepreneurs has done with their life savings. And we cannot be a party to that kind of anarchy anymore. We have to regulate these activities in an effective way to ensure that we protect the public health, that we ensure the quality of life in our neighborhoods, that we ensure the payment of taxes, and I am tired of just shrugging our shoulders and saying, "Well, you know, w- we can't do anything about it because of state law," or "We can't do anything." Yes, we can do something about it, so let's get about the business of doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Kerkorian. Mr., Mr. Keretz?
Hi, Madam Chair. I think Mr. Kerkorian described it well. Essentially, this is a series of restaurants with equipment, with tables and chairs, and they set up in front of other restaurants, they set up next to other restaurants, they don't necessarily have, uh, uh, public health approvals, and so, uh, they can endanger the public both by setting up in the sidewalk area and by serving food that could make them ill or even kill them. This should not be allowed to continue, and so, my motion basically says that we amend this item to instruct the Bureau of Street Services to report back with options to address unpermitted vending businesses, such as restaurant-style operations with equipment, tables and chairs that obstruct the public right-of-way and create unsafe environments for our communities, and include compliance strategies that could be enforced by other municipal agencies. So, we have to stop allowing this, uh, we have to stop it now. Uh, it not only affects the livelihood of restaurants that have paid for their brick-and-mortar operations, and in many cases are struggling to survive, but more importantly, it protects the health of the general public. So, uh, I'm asking that we, we look at this, uh, as an important addition to what we're doing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Keretz. Um, Madam Clerk, there is an amending motion to this item that's already been circulated, so why don't we go ahead and take that up as amended? Item forty A will be deferred, referred to Economic Development Committee. Without objection, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the row and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and vote on that item. As amended, let's open the roll, close the row and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Could just go ahead and take up more, multiple speaker cards?
And, Madam President, for the record, item forty has passed.
Thank you. Uh, Vivian, excuse me, I need, I need you guys to please, I understand it's emotional, it's, it's a difficult issue, I need you to really, um, respect the councils, the council chambers, thank you. Okay, Armando Herman, you have remaining items, um, to speak on?
Fucking United States of America, I got two minutes coming my way.
You've already fulfilled your item forty and your general public comments, you've got two minutes on items four, seven, seven through fourteen.
Well, first, on item number four, I'm in opposition. Fuck number four. Now, as far as item number six, related item for energy climate change, Donald Trump is right. Fuck your climate. Build, build, build. Then, an item number nine, asshole. CD four, the fucking Korean. Communicate the Bureau of Street Lighting, well, like Mr. Corey said, we don't need those fucking lights, we need bright lights. Then, an item number thirteen, 'cause of my jacket has thirteen for bitch. It relates to first consideration, relative amendment of Section ten point five point two. Am I on topic, bitch? 'Cause I'm reading the section forty-two U.S.C. nineteen eighty-three.
Please get on topic, Mr. Herman.
The Board of Water and Power Commission, in which they retaliated against Mr. Spindler and falsely accusing him of being a terrorist in Van Nuys. And the mayor was the subject asshole to that laughing fuck over there regarding Mr. Spindler being arrested for the purchase price cap of two-hundred-and-fifty-million watts of energy to apply to the initial two-hundred MW, which stands for mother wet bats. So, the physical impact statement is this: As long as there's corruption, FBI, fuck them!
Mr. Greenspan, you've got a couple of more items you signed up for, you wanna come on up? You've already fulfilled your general public comment, by the way. No, you are correct. Um, go ahead and speak on the items and your general public comment.
Okay. Mike Greenspan, a ten-and-two Florida Gator, and I still don't see L.A. Now, let's talk about streetlights. Everybody seems to be getting a streetlight district but us in Council District Two. Problem is, I called up something way back on September twelfth, over there on Lancashire, between Boz and Sherman. No response, still nice and dark out there. After all, that's a few rapes and a few robberies out here in La La Land. We wanted to do glitter and glamour in Hollywood instead of looking at reality. Now, let's look at item, item twenty-three. Hey, twenty thousand dollars, that's nothing. Of course, it's going to that Kike Englander's district for more pigs, from the part-time pig, of course. Where is the money for the other districts? Ah, number twenty, a Christmas tree, Merry Christmas. Didn't once the DWP Union Goon say every day is Christmas at City Hall under Council President Garcetti? And, Menora, Happy Hanukkah, you scab rabbis, unionize the synagogues. Now, item one, it's only a forty thousand dollar processing fee, money grows on trees. I mean, I mean, Fable gets five times that amount for his incompetence.
So, item one was actually continued, so you're not on item one.
Item one, the forty thousand dollar processing fee, money must be like water. And, a city bank, well, our three stooges, Keretz, Wesson, and Bonham, yuck, 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 it's only our city money. Hey, um, homeboy Walsh, rest in peace, surprised me. I thought Glenn Dake was a bitch, not Eric Garcetti, but if I were for this proposal, number fifteen, I'd be your bitch, city of L.A. Well, I'm just letting you know, city of L.A., I'm not your bitch, and I don't plan to be. And one other thing, up yours, nigger, Wesson.
Next speaker is Arnold Sacks. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry about that. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay. Now, freedom of speech, Mr. Herman gave me this. Good old forty-two U.S.C., who made UCLA their bitches nineteen eighty-three, fuck Bernie. Well, I got better stuff than that. After all, we're just getting started with show and tell today. After all, my rights matter, and Englander always took them away from me. It's called a constitution. Well, court backs me up. City of L.A. versus Armando Herman, the faggoty Fable case, Judge Jennifer Potts. After all, my rights do matter, and they always will matter in this constitutional republic. But, folks, there's other things, too, in the bag of tricks. Just for you folks, I got this. Yes?
Mr., Mr. Sacks, you wanna come on up? Mr. Sacks, you're speaking on item four, seven, nine, eleven, item thirty, thirty-nine. And did you wish to speak on general public comment? 'Cause it, does it not look like you filled all the cards for that?
Uh, I did, I signed up again.
All right, got it, I got, I just pulled up, okay. Go ahead.
How much time do I, three minutes? Okay, so, uh, it's interesting, uh, Arnold Sacks, by the way. Um, so I'm looking through the agenda, there's items noticed for public hearings, which we're not allowed to speak on. Mr. City Attorney, what's the, uh, city charter say about items noticed for public hearing? Does it have any, anything about items noticed for public hearing? Are you allowed to speak on all those items? Or are you restricted because Herb Wesson passed a rule saying that you're only limited to one minute on the agenda? 'Cause, uh, items seven, nine, and eleven refer to lighting districts that used to be noticed for public hearings, but now are noticed as communications from the lighting whoever. So, they're no longer public hearings, but they always were public hearings. So, is that a way to exclude the public from hearing, being able to talk on them? Mr. City Attorney, you need to do a better job, and you, yesterday, you were talking about you're required to do, and Mr. Busciano mentioned free speech, um, but free speech does not include hate speech. It's, that's, uh, you have going on two different tracks here. Um, item thirty refers to Quimby fees, again, park fees, the city poor parks, yet the county passed the park resolution and the, um, assessment for the park proposition from the county, and the city never gets any parks. Where does the money go? We don't know. And I really liked listening to Mr. Keretz and Mr. Kerkorian talk about...
So, Mr. Sacks, I'm not sure what item you're on. Would you please get back on the items you signed up for?
The items I wanna talk about, they could talk about, whatever item you pass can be overdone, overruled by the state. If I, any of these items on the agenda...
Please get on the items you signed up for.
...can be overruled by the state, it doesn't matter. If I speak on item number seven, it can be overruled by the state, and somebody will say, "Well, we have to send a motion to the state." What's the difference? Uh, Mr. City Attorney, thank you. Public comment. So, I was in, uh, Florida Public Works this morning, and, uh, today's newspaper says, "Report cites overwhelming evidence of Trump abuses" in the top right corner, and on the bottom, it says, "L.A. to vote on developer gift limits." Overwhelming city, uh, Trump abuses, but L.A. to vote on developer gift limits.
Overwhelming city, Trump abuses, but LA to vote on developer gift limits. Doesn't anybody find that abusive? Doesn't anybody think, you know, we have given so much, you have given so much to developers that it's over the top? There's nothing they can't ask for that they don't get, and if they don't get it from the city, they go to the state, and if they don't get it from the state, they go to the county, and if they don't get it from the county, there's always Metro, isn't that right, Mr. Kerkorian? What about helping the middle class? What about helping the people that are, that, that support the city's operations? Oh, I mean, not the city employees, but the public that pays, I'm sorry, I'm out of time.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Arnold. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and take up, vote on a couple of items, let's vote on items twelve, I'm sorry, seven to twelve, and item fourteen. Seven to, we're going to vote on items seven to twelve and item fourteen. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Those items pass, let's go ahead and vote on item sixteen to twenty-nine. Go ahead and open the roll. Those items pass as well, let's go ahead and call up a card, there's a one speaker card for item thirteen. Rory Stewart, are you here? Come on up, you're speaking on item thirteen. You have one minute to speak on item thirteen, sir, good morning.
Thank you, and good morning, council members. My name is Rory Stewart with the Los Angeles Business Council, and we are here today to express our strong support for the LA DWP staff recommendation for the expansion of the feed-in tariff program. The FIT-150 has generated many benefits, but most importantly, nearly forty percent of all in-service installations have been in, in underserved communities that are labeled as solar hotspots. Now, we support the LA DWP's commitment to expand this important program that's going to help LA City achieve its ambitious goals set out by the mayor's new green deal. And it is important to note that of the three hundred megawatts, the first fifty megawatts will be introduced immediately to continue the successful momentum of the program, with the two hundred and fifty megawatts being reviewed by the department staff to incorporate important modifications. And an expanded FIT program is a crucial tool for providing grid reliability to replace existing fossil fuel infrastructure in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and vote on that item, members, let's open the roll on item thirteen, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that item passes, move on to item fifteen, and we have one speaker, Michael
And Madam President, as the speaker makes his way forward, an amending motion has been posted and circulated for council's consideration for item fifteen.
Very well, thank you. Good morning, you have one minute to speak on item fifteen.
Good morning, I'm Michael Schillstone with Central City Association. Leading up to the proposed Charter Amendment B on last November's ballot, the CLA provided a report to City Council in August that details the feasibility of establishing a public bank. While one, one of the challenges identified by the CLA appears to be addressed by AB-857, significant fiscal, legislative and logistical barriers remain. In the same August report, the CLA also outlined how various existing city programs and services could be enhanced and new tools developed to achieve the broad goals set forth for a public bank. This includes an extensive set of proven programs aimed to promote banking and financial support, affordable housing, small business development and economic development, among other services. Recognizing that considerable hurdles still exist to create a public bank, we request that the CLA report back with or that the consultant study include an analysis of the programs noted by the CLA and how these can be used to accomplish the stated public objectives with or without a public bank. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go ahead and vote on item fifteen as amended. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes. Madam Clerk, let's also move on to item number six, there's been an amending motion that's been circulated, is that correct?
That is correct. Motion six A has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll. Mr. Kerkorian, would you like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Madam President, just briefly so that members are aware, last night, the Los Angeles Unified School District Board of Education voted to adopt a goal of achieving one hundred percent renewable energy by 2030. LAUSD is the largest electricity customer that the DWP has, and they're uniquely situated to take advantage of the feed-in tariff as an opportunity to fund rooftop in-basin generation of photovoltaic energy, they're a peak user, so they're probably the best customer that we could have for photovoltaic. So this is an enormous step forward that the school district has taken, and I believe that it's very important that we continue to shape the feed-in tariff program in the way that isn't just randomly handed out, but is focused on what will achieve the most effective policy objectives that we have for the FIT, which is encouraging in-basin generation, especially by public agencies like the schools, like the Department of Recreation and Parks, and like others that where that expenditure of money is not only generating electricity, but it's producing a public good as well. So I'd ask for your aye vote on this matter with the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Kerkorian, let's go ahead and vote on that item. As amended, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on item number thirty. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item thirty-nine, Madam Clerk, you have something to read into the record?
Yes, Madam President, on item thirty-nine, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that items thirty-nine A through D, that the liens be confirmed, that thirty-nine E be received and filed as the property is determined to be owner occupied, that G be confirmed, that H be received and filed as the fees have been paid in full, and that I, J and K be confirmed.
Objection? Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes. Okay, I'm going to call a few general public comment cards, if you please, if I call your name, please come up. David Hunt? Is David Hunt here? You want to come on up? The Red Chief, are you here, Mr. Hunt? You're in the room, he's not here. Go ahead, David, you have one minute of general public comment.
Was this on item number four, general comment?
This is general public comment.
Oh. Never mind, I wanted to speak on four.
You wanted to speak on what item?
Item number four.
Okay, that's not up yet. David Hunt, are you here? How about Rob Quan? Robbie, want to come up, general public comment? General public comment, Rob.
Oh, I'll hold on, hold off my comment till item four.
Nadia, you want to come on up? General public comment? Liliana Huerta? Go ahead, Nadia, general public comment.
Thank you so much for the opportunity, one more time, Council Member Lee, thank you for what you did, thank you, Mr. Kerkorian and Mr. Cortés, for, now I'm asking the other council members to please listen and support. Mr. Price, if you don't mind, Mr. Price, apparently, our council member, Mr. Price, is busy and not, not willing to listen, but you were the one who passed this, support this for the street vending, and I'm asking you to please listen to our people, we want to support, support you guys back in the future, we need your support to all of you guys in this issue for a street vending. We are not against the vendors, the lotero, anything like that, but we, we want you to understand that you really fuck us up as restaurant owners, and you really mess us up big time, we are losing our businesses, please be aware of it, for one, more than one year, you did this to us, we need your support.
Thank you. Thank you, next speaker? You have one minute of general public comment.
Muchas gracias concejales por su apoyo, y sabemos que esto no es, no va a ser fácil.
Thank you very much, council members, for your support, we know that it's not going to be easy.
Estamos buscando unas mejores ciudades limpias.
We want to have clean cities.
Este, prevenir la contaminación porque la grasa que dejan las personas va al mar, todo lo tiran al drenaje.
We also want to reduce the contamination because all of the oil that's left behind makes everything dirty.
Y también les animo que visiten el Valle de San Fernando después de las cinco de la tarde.
I also want to encourage you to visit the San Fernando Valley after five PM in the afternoon.
Y vean realmente la realidad para los que viven por allá, muchísimas gracias.
And you can see what's there, those that live there, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Gracias por darnos la oportunidad otra vez de hablar.
Thank you once again for giving us the opportunity to speak.
Quiero darle las gracias al concejal Lee y a las personas que lo están apoyando.
I want to thank Councilmember Lee and the people that are supporting him.
Por entender el problema y la situación en la que estamos.
For attending to the problem that we're having in our situation.
Me gustaría que los demás se tomaran el tiempo de mirar el problema y apoyar la propuesta que él está haciendo.
I would like the rest of you look at the problem and also consider the proposition he's making.
Recuerden que nosotros somos las personas que aportan para la economía de este país.
And keep in mind that we are the individuals that support the economy of this country.
Somos las personas que le dan trabajo a otras personas.
We are the people that give work to other people.
Y que si nosotros fracasamos dejarían sin empleo a muchas personas más.
And if we were to fail, so many others will be left without employment.
Solamente pido que lo apoyen a él y lo escuchen y miren la propuesta que él tiene.
I'm only asking that you support him and listen to this proposition he's making.
Y gracias.
And thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm going to hold general public comment for just a minute. Did I call your name? What is your name?
Jesús Jiménez.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Especial agradecimiento al señor Kerkorian, señor Lee y al señor Cortés.
Special thanks to Mr. Kerkorian, Mr. Lee and Mr. Corretts.
Por entender lo que es tener un negocio legal en el condado de Los Ángeles.
For having understood what it means to have a legal business in the county of Los Angeles.
Para los concejales restantes les pido que si tienen familiares, amigos y alguna otra persona que les pudiera dar una opinión de lo que es correr un negocio.
And for the rest of you council members, I want to ask you that if you were to have family or friends that could give you one more opinion about having your own business.
Especialmente para el señor Price.
Especially for Mr. Price.
Para que tomen en cuenta lo difícil y el problema que a diario y todo, a toda hora, un dueño y un, una persona responsable del restaurante lleva a diario todo, con todos sus problemas.
So that you keep into account all the difficulties and the time and the problems that business owner has to take on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr., I'm going to hold general public comment, we have to get through a presentation that's been waiting here. Mr. Weezer, are you ready?
Felicidades.
Muchas gracias, y aquí qué digo?
Si usted quiere.
¿Me quito la sombrero?
No, no siquiera. Aquí hay una.
¿Y ellos quién son?
Ellos son los concejales, todos son los pizzi concejales, la presidenta, la primera latina que electa el consiglio latina ayer, está ahí arriba, y a.
¿Cómo me dirijo ahí?
Mr. Weezer, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, another round of applause to Mariachi Divas, thank you so Thank you very much, and it was nice to have a little break from our usual business here in the middle of our council meeting to provide, to lower down the tension that I felt in the room from everybody coming up with some amendments and everything else here on the council chambers, but it's great to be here in this, as our mayor likes to call it, our temple of democracy, to see that, that we are making better rules and regulations and ordinances for our Angelinos. And that's why we're here today as well with a very special presentation. We have with us today someone who reaches more eighteen to twelve-year-olds in the city of Los Angeles than perhaps any other medium in the city of Los Angeles. This is an individual who gives back to the community, who does a lot for us, and that's why we are here to acknowledge him today. And I'm talking about our beloved Don Cheto, bienvenido. Don Cheto is a Mexican-American entertainer based in Los Angeles, whose morning radio show, television variety show and musical recordings have made him one of our most beloved Latino personalities. Every day, Don Cheto brings his life experience in both Mexico and the United States to millions of fans. And get this, according to 2019 Nielsen ratings, Don Cheto's radio show, Don Cheto Alare, ranks as the number one program among adults eighteen to thirty-four in Los Angeles. But in addition to that, he is someone who is often seen But in addition to that, he is someone who is often seen in many community events, giving of his time to make sure that we continue to promote the well-being of all Angelinos. But the question is, how did a sixty-three-year-old, are you sixty-three years old?
I'm between a hundred and sixty.
He said he's between a hundred and sixty. I don't know. How did a sixty-three-year-old immigrant from the town of La Salceda in Michoacán, Mexico, who crossed the border more than thirty years ago achieve this kind of success? Well, in part, Don Cheto's laid-back rural Mexican style is responsible. The simple and direct way that he speaks seems to resonate with audiences. Don Cheto is like everyone's favorite uncle. But he comes with a message. He tackles current events affecting the Latino community. He doesn't shy away from controversy, but he approaches these issues with humor, insight, and a sense of compassion. Finally, I think Don Cheto's success has to do with our city's role as a capital of migrant Mexico. Los Angeles is not only a Mexican city, but also a rural Mexican city. Our community is brimming with immigrants who only recently left behind lives on ranches and farms. Both groups identify with Don Cheto. People who grew up in Los Angeles want to stay connected to their roots. Don Cheto helps them keep that connection going strong. People who are newly arrived sometimes need direction when it comes to dealing with the complexities of living in this new culture. Don Cheto is their guide. It all comes down to this. With Don Cheto, you get what you see. He's a simple guy who tells it the way it is, or at least the way he thinks it is, and that's what people most appreciate about him. Ladies and gentlemen, the city of Los Angeles has a very special gift for Don Cheto on his birthday, thanking him for the contributions he's made to the city of Los Angeles for connecting us all together, no matter where we come from in the world. And I'd like to present this resolution declaring today, December 4th, Don Cheto Day in the city of Los Angeles.
Bienvenido, Don Cheto.
Muchas gracias. Este, me dedico a, so what I do, I do the talking right in the morning, but it's really hard for me to talk right now. It's really weird. But I'm really honored to receive this, and muchas gracias a todos, a la gente que me acompañó, la gente que a lo largo de mi carrera ha estado apoyándome. Muchas gracias. Veo tantas caras familiares. Muchas gracias a todos. Pepe Garza, muchas gracias por su apoyo desde siempre. Gracias a personas como usted que vieron en mí algo que ni yo sabía que tenía. Estoy esta mañana aquí. I'm an immigrant from Mexico, really. Can you see? Can you tell? And I'm really, I mean, I came here not long ago as an immigrant, and now I'm in front of all of you guys, and it's overwhelming. And hey, I guess it's possible, right? Thank you. Thank you very much. Gracias a Eduardo León. Gracias por todo. Tú sabes lo que significa para mí, mi familia, tu amistad. Gracias a los equipos que han estado conmigo a lo largo de los años, al equipo que tengo ahorita, Saïd Giselle Chino. Muchas gracias. Los quiero mucho. A toda mi familia. Esto es para ustedes. Y viva Los Ángeles.
Mr. Weezer.
Yes.
Mr. Weezer, we have Mr. Harris Dawson on the queue.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Sir, I want to confess that I've never been able to listen to the radio show, but I want to rise today and thank Mr. Weezer for bringing you, and I want to represent all sneakerheads in the city of Los Angeles. You have the best sneaker game in all radio. Today, I see you have on the Travis Scott's that no one else can get, so I just wanted to pay my respects to you in that regard.
Mr. Harris Dawson is our in-house DJ, our in-house DJ and speaker expert. So thank you very much. Back to you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. Have you all been happy with us today? Some of the individuals that make Don Cheto's show possible. We have with us Peter Malcolm, the CEO of Lieberman Media. Also, Pepe Garza, the program director.
Thank you so much.
And Alvin David, cast member. Well, there you have it, folks. One of the highest-rated programs in the morning here in the city of Los Angeles. And if you listen to this show, there's a lot of humor, a lot of jokes being said, but at the same time, they are addressing some very important issues that we all face day to day, Latino, immigrant or not. They talk about those issues, and they impact how we think about the city, and they do it in a very positive way, and that's what is great about this. If you listen more to Don Cheto, you see his positive attitude, his brimming view toward the future is what's representative of this great city. So he is a great example of what it means to be an Angelino, whether he speaks broken English or he speaks Spanish, whatever it may be. He is a great, or Spanglish, he is a great representative for this great city. Muchísimas gracias, Don Cheto. Tú eres como mi tío. Agradezco mucho todo lo que haces por nosotros adelante, y gracias por estar con nosotros. I declare the Dia de Don Cheto in Los Ángeles.
Felicidades, Don Cheto. Resume back to our council meeting, if you can please, if you're exiting our council chambers, please do it as quietly as possible so we can resume our council meeting. Madam Clerk, you have an announcement on two items?
Yes, Madam President. There are requests to send item five and item thirty forthwith today.
Without objection, that will be the order. Let's go back to general public comments. José de los Santos, are you still here, José? María Torres, if I mention your name, please come up. María Torres, Jesse Vázquez, José Trejo, Rafael Guerrero, Alicia Mendoza, Marte Rigos, and Vivian.
They're not here.
Okay, Vivian is here. José Margot, José Margot, nobody here with that name? Benjamín Castillo, Antonia Ramírez. Go ahead, señor José. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I would say thank you for what you guys doing, and I just want to let her know this, Santi, you can do, and right away, you know, because they affected really the business, and there's a really, really bad on the street, and you know, this probably in the, like, we can say, you know, one mile of a business, one each other in Glenox Boulevard, you know? And I think, you know, and they put advertising and online, you know, they serve alcohol in there, you know? You guys got to do something, you know, because, and I would say thank you.
Thank you very much. Vivian, you want to come on up? Let me keep calling a couple of names before you start. No.
Mi nombre es José Trejo.
Un momentito, señor.
Okay.
Continúa, disculpe.
Mi nombre es José Trejo. Quería dar las gracias a los concejales que están de parte de nosotros. Los demás tendrán su razón, pero quiero exponer un caso que a mí me consta.
Good morning. My name is José Trejo. I want to thank all of the council members that are in favor, and those of you that are not, you must have your reasons. I want to go ahead and share one particular case that I am aware of.
Los restaurantes que están, los restaurantes que están en las calles, no tienen higiene de nada.
The restaurants that are on the streets, they don't have hygiene of any kind.
Yo vi en una ocasión que uno que estaba despachando la comida, en un intermedio, yo vi a uno que estaba sirviendo la comida, en un intermedio, se fue a urinar al lado de un carro y regresó a servir la comida.
I saw when one individual was taking out food, he left to go urinate.
¿Por qué? Porque no tiene donde lavarse las manos, no tiene donde ir al baño, no tienen nada, y no hay inspección para ellos.
Why? Because he has no place to wash his hands, and there isn't any kind of inspection going on.
Entonces quiero que ponga atención, por favor, a esta situación que existe. Al rato va a haber una epidemia.
I want you to please pay attention to this issue in the future. There could be an epidemic.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Vivian, you're next.
First of all, I want to say thank you to Mr. Lee Cacorian and Corretes for listening to our words and giving weight to the issue of public health and safety, and for the restaurants that we represent that are losing their businesses on a daily basis based on this issue. I want to speak to our city attorney and remind him that there is an urgency clause on section five that states that you must, must protect the health and safety of the residents of the sidewalk vending program, and it must become effective as soon as possible. And for all these reasons, the ordinance shall become effective upon publication pursuant to Los Angeles Charter, section 253. I want you to please, Martinez Orfaro, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Blumfeld, Bonin, Biscinino, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, please join hands to protect our community. And on behalf of Sofia's Angels and the families that I represent, whose children have died of leukemia, I say thank you for protecting our children from any kind of foodborne illness.
Thank you, Vivian. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker. Antonia Ramírez. Antonia, hold on for just a second. Let me call a couple of more speakers. Iman Malik Mohamud, are you here? Do you want to come on up, sir? Wayne Williams and Wayne Spiller. Go ahead, Antonia.
Vote the socialist communist democrats out, or we will triple the poverty homeless Holocaust with high crimes. Furthermore, put the elite satanic Zionist Jews, who are highly skilled thieves, i.e. the judges, commissioners, attorneys, and politicians and their fucking families, put these fucking kikes out on the streets, homeless, where they belong. Let them suffer and be terrorized like we do every fucking night and day. I am asking for also help to please provide the few good homeless people who got all wet, myself included, last night and this morning, with dry waterproof tents, tarps, blankets, flashlights, batteries, food, snacks, and dry clothing, jackets, sweaters, and gloves, for only a few good men and women who are located on Main Street between Arcadia and New High Street. It's walking distance. It's between La Plaza de Cultura and the Catholic Church. The Catholic Church has done nothing to help. And again, I thank you for the beautiful Mexican mariachi. It was beautiful, absolutely stunning.
Thank you, Mr. Ramírez. You want to come on up? Mr. Mahmoud? You have one minute of general public comment, sir.
This is Iman Malik Tarik Mohamud, missionary of Ahmadiya Muslim Community. I want to share.
Can you pull the mic up a little bit? Thank you.
I want to share some Islamic teachings on peace. God says in the Holy Quran, whoever kills a person will be as if he had killed all mankind, and who gives life to a single person will be as if he had given life to all mankind. In a battle, the opponents of the Muslim people wanted to take the water from a fountain dominated by the Muslims themselves. Some Muslims wanted to stop, but the holy prophet of Islam came and allowed them. On another occasion, the holy prophet of Islam was with his companions when he saw a funeral passing by. The holy prophet stood up for the respect of the deceased. Somebody said that he was a Jew. Prophet of Islam said, wasn't he a human being? Love for all, hate for none. Thank you.
Mr. Williams, followed by Wayne Spiller.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm Wayne Williams with the California Clean Money Campaign. Thank you for council's leadership in strengthening the city's matching fund system and for putting the crucial issues of a developer contribution ban on today's agenda. Thank you specifically to Council President Wesson and council members Bonin and Corretes. Our coalition has a compromise amendment request to make item four's ordinance be into a real and workable developers and fundraising ban by extending it to match the standard set by measure H for the city contractor contributions and fundraising ban. Unfortunately, there was no opportunity to discuss it in the Rules Committee, so I hope you will give our coalition representatives the opportunity to discuss it briefly in comments for item four. Thank you.
Mr. Spiller?
Yes, little housekeeping today with the new Nouri administration. Jose Weezer needs to be put back on committees starting January 1st. I've researched the file. No criminal charges have been filed. There have only been two arrests. No arrests have been made. Subpoenas have been issued. Now, why does Herb Wesson not let this man represent his community on committees? Because he's a racist fucking little fucking chimpanzee nigger fuck, that's why. Herb Wesson hates niggers. Herb Wesson hates Latinos. Herb Wesson hates mothers. Herb Wesson hates Koreans. And John Lee understands that, and last night he gave me the sign. Herb Wesson, not on this site. No on Herb Wesson for the County Board of Supervisors, you demon little chimpanzee chain-smoking nigger. Put Herb, put Weezer back in business. Thank you.
All right, that concludes general public comments. Let's go ahead and close general public comments. Go ahead and take up item number four. Mr. Rue, would you like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Madam President.
Sorry, Mr. Rue, people at the back, would you please be quiet?
Ms. Antonia Ramírez, I need you to please be quiet and not disrupt this council chambers. Thank you very much. Mr. Rue, go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Today is a very bittersweet day. It is sweet because today is the culmination of my fifth attempt in four and a half years to pass what is in my mind the most important reform our city deserves. Yet it's a bit bitter because it doesn't go far enough. This law before us today, by all means, is not perfect, and I don't believe it will end all perceptions of corruption or restore the public's trust overnight. But doing nothing today is not an option, and doing nothing is... And doing nothing is ignoring the crisis before us, and doing nothing will cost us the trust of Angelenos. And it is the public's trust that is the foundation of everything that we do. Trust is the foundation of every democratic government in the world. Trust provides legitimacy. Trust is the basis of our power. And in any government by the people and for the people, the public's trust must always be held as our highest goal. Restoring trust in City Hall has been my number one priority since the day I entered office. And today is a significant milestone. And this is why I ran for office. This is what I campaigned on, and this is who I am. Today, we lay the groundwork to change the public's perception of City Hall. Today, we commit ourselves to comprehensive reform. Today, we passed a law that bans contributions from developers that have a project before us. And this is not the last step, but the first. We must make it clear to the public that we value their trust and that today is not the end of a discussion, but the beginning. Let us not forget that in a democracy, power belongs to the people and that they are trusting us to make the right decision. And thus, we must build a government worthy of their trust. And colleagues, thank you for taking this vote up today. And in addition to the I vote that I asked for, I'd like to introduce an amending motion to move up the implementation, implementation date to the 2022 primary election and a second amendment to present and adopt ordinance C banning restricted sources from making behest payments. And I ask my colleagues for a second on both of these amendments. We should take care of every single loophole and commit to a transparent government and pass a reform that is enforceable and legally defensible. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Is there a second? There is no second on these two motions. Let's go ahead and, um, we've got two, uh, speaker, we have three speakers on the queue. Mr. Corretz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Mr. Rue's efforts in this arena, and I think it's something that the city needs to pass. My concerns, though, are that we make it difficult for people to comply, and I don't want to see that happen. There is somewhat vague language about how we set up a database. This shouldn't actually start an implementation until we have a clear process with a database with everyone whose contributions should not be taken are listed. And so, I mean, I've been, I've been an elected official for most of the last 31 years. I've never had an FPPC fine. I've never had anything go wrong, and it's because I'm very careful. But I think this will be difficult. So we need to be sure before we actually implement it that we have created such a database that we fund the staff that's needed to create it, that we do the proper analysis, and we have a list. So people aren't accidentally violating what we intend them not to violate. So I would encourage that we do that carefully, we provide enough time to, to get there, we provide the funding, we provide the analysis, and then at the end of the day, I think this is an important step for transparency and an important step for the city to, to not have the appearances in any way of impropriety. So I appreciate Mr. Rue's taking this step forward and, and leading on this, on I, on this item. But we have to be sure not only that we set this up, but we provide the funding for staff so that we can reach this timeline and have everything done right. If we're going to do it, we absolutely need to do it right. I ask for your I vote, but as we move forward, I ask also that we, we keep our eyes on that prize as well.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz. Mr. Bonin, followed by Mr. Ofero, followed by Mr. Corocian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hate to be Eeyore, the guy who reigns on the, the parade, but I actually don't think this is a, a particularly groundbreaking or particularly important or significant piece of legislation today. I thi, I think that when it comes to campaign finance reform, all we're doing is, is feeding a vitamin C tablet to somebody with pneumonia until we do full public financing. Full public financing is the only way to have clean money. A system where we're saying, okay, we're not going to take, allow money from an affordable housing developer, but you can be a fossil fuel executive whose company is destroying the planet, that's okay? Something's wrong with that. It's, it's just this weird little goofy piecemeal system that we do, and, and we have to vote for it. We have to vote for this today because if we don't, tomorrow morning, the LA Times, and when we're running for our election, there's going to be a, a newspaper story or hit mail that says such and such voted against the developer ban. We will vote for this today, but it is at best hollow because it is not consistent with measure H. Now, there are ways in which this is actually, there are elements of this that are stronger than measure H. There is, the, the definition of principles in this is stronger than in measure H, and some of the, the, the exceptions to the, the rules are tighter here and are broader in measure H. So my feeling is we need to, as long as we're doing this piecemeal thing, and to the advocates, I think we need to get over this piecemeal crap and go for full, full public financing because we're, we're, we're losing momentum on the real deal by doing the piecemeal stuff. But I think the, the next piecemeal thing we have to do if we're going to keep it up is to synchronize H and this, so that the strongest elements of this are in the enabling ordinance of H, and the strongest elements of H are in this. That has to happen with the database. I'll put in a separate motion that, that, that tries to synchronize those two things. In the meantime, we'll, we'll, we'll let this go forward today, but, I mean, if you really believe in clean money, it's at best a, a, a pyrrhic victory. And I, and I just want to say, I know this is sort of breaking the rule of collegiality, but I, I gotta say, Mr. Rue, it's, it's a little disingenuous for you to propose rules for the election for half of this council when it doesn't apply to your election. And that's not cool. If we're going to be doing this, we should make it apply to ourselves, and that should be every election and not just half the body.
Mr. Ofero, followed by Mr. Corocian.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, I agree, this is not groundbreaking by any measure. And in one way that it doesn't go far enough, it is, it doesn't take effect immediately beginning with candidates running right now for the 2020 race. The fact that it, Mr. Rue talked about moving it up to March 2022, how about moving it up to December 4th, 2019? In that sense, it would go far enough if you really want to achieve the objective that you, that you outline. This is not the panacea because what will happen is this will just increase the play for independent expenditures. That's what's going to happen. When I ran for reelection in 2017, we combed through my donations and made sure that if we received a check for any project that was pending, we returned the check, and we let it be known that we would not accept campaign donations from any developer with a pending project. It takes a lot of work, but a campaign can do that. And I would argue somewhat opposite of Mr. Corretz, I don't know that we need an electronic filing system in order for us to take that responsibility now. So it is far from a perfect system, from a perfect system, and I, I agree with Mr. Bonin. The only, the only way to really do this is through a public financing system. That's the only way to not have some sort of, you know, unwanted element to running a campaign. And that's just not the reality we live in. It's up to us as candidates to monitor the intake of, of campaign contributions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ofero. Mr. Corocian?
Thank you very much, Madam President and colleagues, for this discussion. I, I guess I would add to Mr. Bonin's point a bit. While public finance would certainly be the best way to eliminate any possibility of undue influence as a result of money, there, the next best way is full transparency and ensuring that people understand where money is coming from. And we don't have that system now. And Mr. Ofero mentioned the push into IEs, and the very worst place that we see that is in independent expenditure campaigns. And throughout the United States, really, in state elections, federal elections, and in our elections, pushing money into these largely unconstrained, largely inaccessible and non-transparent committees that often give to each other in order to further conceal where the money is coming from is the single worst thing that's happening when it comes to financing campaigns, in my view, over the last couple of decades. And it's try as we might, I introduce legislation to try and correct this at the state level, and try as we might, the Ethics Commission has worked on this for at least 15, 20 years, I think. The constraints that we have because of First Amendment limitations on what we're able to do to constrain independent expenditures is just swamping every other piecemeal effort we make to try to constrain contributions that are directly received by candidates committees because they're pennies on the dollar. I mean, contributions that we get that are limited in amounts, you know, pale in comparison to the hundreds of thousands of dollars that independent expenditures spend. In my first campaign, two unions spent a million dollars to try to defeat me. A million dollars. Now, if those had been, you know, some other kind of committee other than a, a labor union, no one would have any idea where that money was coming from. So I think until we get our hands around this, we're going to be spinning our wheels and trying to really constrain the, the undue influence of money in our elections. But I, on the transparency front, I, I want to throw out another thought. And Mr. Rue had proposed ordinance C, which addresses the behested payments issue. I think there's still more work to be done, for sure, on that concept of, of what would be prohibited, what would be constrained and so on, and behested payments. But I do tend to agree with what Commissioner Orden recommended, which was to lower the disclosure threshold. And again, to the point of transparency, it's one thing to catch people, it's one thing to put up these gotcha sort of things where Ethics Commission can do an audit and find somebody did something wrong. But the better thing is to ensure that the public knows exactly what's going on. And if people are receiving or asking for thousands of dollars in behested payments, I don't think it's too much to ask that they disclose that so that the public knows it. So I would make a motion that we actually amend proposed ordinance C and replace it with language that would do as Commissioner Orden recommended, which is to lower the disclosure threshold to a thousand dollars while we're working on the other, the other provisions with regard to behested payments. And to Mr. Bonin's points, I think there's a lot of places where ordinance B and measure H should be brought more into alignment. I think the exclusion of the contractors, subcontractors, major subcontractors is something that needs to be addressed. I think, you know, that there are places that, for example, applying this to all city committees rather than just candidate committees probably makes a lot of sense, but I think that needs to be done thoughtfully, aligning these two measures and not spitballed on the floor of the council. But I, I think those are areas that we need to move forward on. So I would go ahead and, and make that motion with regard to ordinance C to advance the reduction of the disclosure threshold.
Mr. Corocian has made a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Bonin? Mr. Bonin seconds it. Very well. Mr. Lee, would you like to speak too? Just a second, Mr. Rue. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, you know, I agree with Councilman Corocian about just, everything needs to be full disclosure. People can take a look at who's donating to us and make a decision on their own. We're going to vote for the, the proposed B, but I want us to be very careful about behested payments. This, you know, I think everyone around this horseshoe got into government because they wanted to help people. I've always believed, I've always believed that corporations who make money in our communities, make money in our city, have a corporate responsibility to give back. And obviously, as leaders in our own communities, we know, we know the, the different organizations that do, do the most good. And so when corporations come to you and say, hey, you know, we want to give back to this community, what are the ones that you work with? I, I urge this council not to take that, take that, be careful not to take that away from us. If, if I'm not, if, if I'm over the years not able to raise money for organizations like Devonshire Pals, where we have broken the cycle of gangs on Parthenia, we've lowered juvenile crime by 40%, San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission, 90-bed homeless shelter that has helped hundreds of families get off the streets, where we have a 95% success rate using no tax dollars. The YMCA, where we've built 16 after-school daycare centers, because so many of us, including myself, are, you know, couples that both work and need places for our kids to go that we know are safe. So I, I, I urge this before we take, you vote on anything regarding behest payments, that we, we want us to take a look and, and understand. I just don't want a knee-jerk reaction to, you know, any situation where we've taken up this contribution, but then all of a sudden, you know, behest payments thrown out there and that we lose our ability to point corporations in the right direction on where we think their money will be best served.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Harris Dawson, followed by Mr. Ofero, followed by Mr. Corocian.
Madam Chair, and thank you to all, everybody--
Members of the audience, if I can please remind you, we're still trying to run our meeting. Please ask courteous, Mr. Harris Dawson?
I want to thank all the members that have weighed in on this topic--
Mr. Spill, I'm sorry, Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Spiller? Mr. Armando Herman, this is your first and final warning. Stop disrupting this meeting.
It was Spiller.
Okay, you know what, mister?
Can you please remove Mr. Armando Herman? He continues to disrupt this meeting by standing up. Thank you very much, Mr. Herman.
Mr. Herman, you've disrupted the meeting. You've been asked to leave quietly. You're not doing it. You've been ordered removed.
You continue, Mr. Spiller. You will also be removed from the council chambers. Sorry about that, Mr. Harris Dawson. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all the members who've spoken to this, this issue. This is a, an issue, behested payments in particular, about which I have a good deal of passion. Having been like you, Madam President, a person who ran a nonprofit, who relied on partnerships with our elected officials to raise money to make sure that those nonprofits survived and thrived and were able to provide services to people and especially poor people. And here is the, I think unintended consequences, but it is an undeniable consequence. When you put payments to nonprofit organizations in the category with campaign donations, you necessarily taint them. It may be not fair, it may not be the intention, but that is in fact what happens. To this day, and we, I don't have to speculate about this because this has already happened. Organizations in my district have called me and say, hey, I have this donor who gives every year, and now they're saying they don't want to give because it's going to call, it's going to trigger a report because of our association with you or because you've helped us in the past. This also happened two weeks ago, right back here. Someone from the LA Times comes up to me and says, you raised X amount of dollars from a corporation called BlackRock. I've literally never heard of this organization. We dug and we dug and we dug, and what we found out is I let California Conservation Corps put my name on a host committee list. And so then, everybody who California Community Foundation raised money from suddenly has a behest from me. These people I've never talked to, had any contact with, probably wouldn't have any contact with. So it's just a really foul system, and I think before you do anything, before you do anything that takes resources away from poor people or has any potential to do that, you got to be very, very careful that you're getting it right and you're actually doing what you intend to do. And so I appreciate the sentiment that comes around transparency around behest payment, but the unintended consequences hurt people that are never going to make it into these chairs and are never going to interview with the LA Times about how they don't trust the government. Because their distrust of the government because, comes because they don't have their basic needs met. And so I'd offer that to, to all of my colleagues as someone who's been on both sides of the fence and can feel acutely what this has the capacity to do.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Corocian?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't disagree with my colleagues. My proposal is simply to change the disclosure limit. There's still much to be done with regard to, you know, any-- There's still much to be done with regard to, you know, any effort to prohibit or limit behested payments. That has to be done very carefully for all the reasons that have been stated. My proposal is simply to lower the, the reporting threshold, because when Mr. Lee does the great work that he did as chief of staff to Mr. Englander to save the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission, for example, and as many of us did, when we do that kind of work, I don't mind telling the public about that. I think that's really important to tell the public that we've done that good work, or the Boys and Girls Club, or New Directions for Youth, or all the other things that we all do to help the nonprofits in our district. I'm, I think that's a positive thing to, to talk about. So, I don't mind having a requirement that we disclose those behested payments. When it comes to the issue of what should be acceptable and not acceptable, I think Mr. Harris Dawson has hit on a lot of the concerns that I've had about prohibitory language when it comes to behested payments, and I think that's something that we would really need to dive into a lot more depth into with the Ethics Commission, in committee and so on, before there's any prohibitory language. Mine is simply about disclosure. Now, if, if members are uncomfortable advancing that at this point and would like that to be considered as part of a package of, of things and, and brought back, I'm not adverse to that, but I think that this disclosure part, we can expedite even when we're working, you know, to try to address some of the other issues that Mr. Rue's motion has raised and some of the other issues that are before us. While we're working on those, we have lots of time before the 22, 2022 election to, to get that right. But I think on the disclosure part, that's a fairly discreet, simple question that we could move forward expeditiously if not today.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. There are no other speakers on this item. Mr. Kukorian, I'm going to go ahead and refer your amendment back to Rules Committee. And Madam Clerk, there is a technicality on item number one, so I'd like to go ahead and read that into the record. Move the amendment, move to amend the Rules Committee report to adopt revised Ordinance B dated November 22nd, attached to the foul and lieu of the recommendation number one. That is now before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll.
Excuse me, Madam President, and a second for that amendment?
Mr., we've satisfied public comment and committee, sir. Thank you very much, Rob. Is there a second? Mr. Bob, Mr. Blumenfield, let's go ahead and open the roll.
Mr. Previn, please be quiet.
Do you want to go ahead and speak to that, Mr. Struffin?
No, I was just trying to get the audience to stop shouting. I couldn't actually hear what you were saying.
Madam Clerk.
And Madam President, then for clarification, the first motion proposed today by Council Member Rue failed due to the lack of a second, sir. The motion by Kukorian Bonin has been referred to the Rules Committee, and the matter before council is the Rules Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee report as amended by the motion Martinez Blumenfield.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin.
Yeah, just a, a point of order, and apologize for being the fly in the ointment here, but there were a couple people who came up for general public comment, who wanted to speak on number four, and they were told, not now? And I think they were left with the impression that they didn't speak on general public comment.
I don't think they said not now, they chose not to speak in general public comment. But no one was told not to speak.
Okay.
Right, but, but you had your, your general public comment opportunity, you didn't want to take it. All right, I understand that. Thank you, Rob. Thanks. Go ahead and open the roll on this item. So, go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, what's now before us?
And for the record, that matter is adopted as amended.
Okay, Mr.?
Consider item four, no, I mean, item 39G.
Say that again, sir, I can hear you.
Some of you got that right. No, not item four, 39G. From the continuation agenda and continue for 120 days, it's a lien that we want to work out with the...
Okay, we're going to have to reconsider this item.
39G?
We have to open up this item for reconsideration, so let's go ahead and do that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, what do you wish to do on this item, sir?
Continue for 120 days so that we could work with the person to work something out.
Very well.
And that would be till April 1st, 2020.
And without objection, that'll be the order. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. What's before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
There's been a request to send item four forthwith. Without objection, that will be the order. What's before us now?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred, members, are there any announcements? Any announcements? Can we all rise for adjourned motions, please? Members, are there any adjourned motions to my right? Members of the public, I'm asking, we're, we're doing adjourned motions, Mr. Arnold Sacks. I'm going to ask you once again to stop disrupting this meeting. Any adjourned motions to my right? Any adjourned motions? Mr. Blumenfield, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, today I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Dana Sherman. Dana was my appointee to the City Bicycle Advisory Committee. He passed away this November 20th of complications due to heart surgery. He was an amazing person. He was the board chair of a local nonprofit called Fleet Street, which worked with at-risk and incarcerated youth at Pacific Lodge in Woodland Hills, dealing with at-risk youth and, and with the LA County probation camps. He offered bike repair and safety training. Many of these young people were able to leave the, were able to leave their detention specifically with the bicycle that they had rebuilt and restored under Dana's tutelage. It's, it's sad, but in some ways a tribute, we're having the first sic la viea west of the 405 this, this Sunday, and, you know, I, I dedicate that in some ways to the memory of Dana Sherman, because he was such an avid enthusiast. Fleet Street offered bike maintenance and repair at my annual bike ride. They did it for free, they helped the community out, and many other events throughout the city, including summer nightlights. Dana was an active member of the Woodland Hills Rotary Club. He was a senior lecturer at Sony, at Sani Department of Civil and Environmental Engineering at the University of Southern California. He was a member of the California Bar. Through his volunteer activities and professional work, he helped make Los Angeles, and in particular, he helped make the West San Fernando Valley a much better place. Dana, may you rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Any other adjourned motions to my left? Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Madam President. I ask today that we adjourn today's council meeting in memory of architect Dion Neutra, the son of preeminent architect Richard Neutra. Dion waged a decades-long war to save his father's iconic buildings from decay, remodeling, and demolition. His father, whose world-class architectural peers of the international-style modernism included the likes of Louis Kahn and Rudolf Schindler. He was a Viennese immigré who came to the US in 1923 to work with Frank Lloyd Wright and arrived here in Los Angeles in 1925. Father and son worked together and apart, influencing the aesthetics of Los Angeles for nearly a century. His father died in 1970, and Dion continued his father's life work throughout his life, including fighting to preserve his dad's vision and legacy, not just here in LA, but worldwide. Personally, many have talked about Dion as a lovely man and a Silver Lake community activist as well. He died at his home on Neutra Place in Silver Lake, a neighborhood chock full of Neutra architecture. He was 93, and may you rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Ofero?
I'm planning an adjourned motion for Dion Neutra. I know the family, so we're actually waiting on information. We're going to bring the family in and friends in the foundation. So, I'm going to hold off, and I'll still do that adjourned motion. He was a constituent of mine. I knew him personally, and he did live in Silver Lake, so stay tuned for us to do an adjourned motion properly and bring in his family.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Ofero. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.